Good evening. Welcome to the July 25, 2011 Goffstown Board of Selectmen's meeting. Our first item is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all rise, please? Nick, would you please lead us?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is the acceptance of the correction of the public and the non-public minutes of 7:18:11.
We're going to accept with some corrections.
You weren't here.
He knows of one thing.
I watched the video. I won't vote on accepting it, but I did note some corrections.
Okay.
On page three.
We usually don't have a person who's not here making corrections on the minutes. That's why I'm chuggling, I'm sorry.
Can anyone second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Page three.
Yep.
First paragraph, last sentence, it says, "I showed people the dollar amount for their taxes because the rate fluctuates."
What the heck was that saying?
I think it was, "I showed them, I showed people the dollar amount."
Showed.
Showed, should, sounds like it.
Last paragraph, second line from the bottom. Carl was speaking and he said, on the, where it says, "On the revenue side," he was actually, he said, "On the expense side." If you come to all the department heads and say, "What would you do?" Then I'd have to look at capital projects. He was referring to the expense side, not the revenue side.
That would be correct.
And then on page eight, the third paragraph down, starting with Chairman DeVanzo, it's the end of the third sentence, third line, "We have to continue operations we need to do without knowing this is an important position before us." The statement was, "We have to continue operations we need to do without knowing this," period. And I don't know what they meant by that last, "is an important position before us." That sentence doesn't make sense.
Well, there's a lot of things in it that don't make sense, but I don't even try to go there, just leave them the way they are.
But that's all I had.
Okay.
Oh, but we do need to make the note that the date of the top needs to be corrected.
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just, made the comment that there were other ones.
It should be July 18th.
Yes.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's 4-0-1. Thank you. My understanding is we have no announcements unless anybody.
I do.
Okay. 2:50?
Yeah, after town.
All right. Okay.
We had the ice cream social this past Saturday at Roy Park, and I know Rick is here from Parks and Recreation. Want to publicly thank Rick, as well as his entire staff, for setting up the event and tearing it all down. I think we had, what did you say, about 500 people, maybe a little more come and go. Only had two things, ice cream left, so that was a good indication of how, when it was a pretty hot day. And I also want to thank, you know, all the volunteers who helped scoop the ice cream from the Pennardville Lions Club to Hillside Methodist Church. The Baines family helped out, just had a lot of people, a lot of people help out, so overall it was a great event. And that's about it.
We even had Mrs. Goffstown there.
Yeah, we have Mrs. Goffstown there.
You'll have to come, you'll see her at the parade.
Okay.
In the float.
David?
My item is, oh, business, I'm sorry.
Oh, business, okay. No other announcements? We'll move on to public comment. At this time, we'll take comments from members of the public. We're gonna need your name for the record. Would you please come up here, please?
Sure. My name's Tom Mulligan. I live on the corner of Parsons Drive and had written to selectmen about my concerns with respects to the possibility of putting a field in across from me. I had spoken to you, Phil, I know, I had spoken to Rick, and Nick and I spoke last night with respects to the plan that proposed. I gave Nick quite a few pictures of, you know, what the water does every year there, and, I mean, where you're proposing to put the parking lot is underwater every spring. I certainly don't have any problem with children across the road, but I want to know where you're gonna be putting the cars. Back, the old field, the old cemetery field, you had 300 feet from the, from 114 to the back, which would accommodate probably 30 cars, and they would go too deep, you know, and sometimes overflow onto 114. I mean, I've lived on the road for 25 years. I just don't see where you're gonna put the cars that you speak of, showed of parking them up and down Parsons Drive. I have a lot of concerns with that, and I also am concerned about the fact that no one from Parsons Drive was notified of the meeting tonight, besides myself.
Well, I think what you're referencing to the meeting tonight is just a presentation to the board from Parks and Rec. I mean, it's not a public hearing or anything along that line, it's just a presentation to the Board of Selectmen from Parks and Rec.
But it's a ma, it's a major change here that I think, sorry?
No, but what I'm saying is, we haven't even seen the plan. The plan is, I assume, is gonna be presented to us tonight.
That's my understanding.
So, it's no, there is no possible way for us to even respond to any of your questions until after we've seen the plan.
But do you not think it would have possibly been a good idea to have, you know, the players involved, the abutters involved, so that we could have?
This is not a public hearing at this point. It's just a presentation to the board.
I understand that.
From the department, that's all it is.
I understand that, but as we go through the process, I would imagine it would have been healthy to have the abutters here tonight, just to do what I'm doing. Would you not think so?
Not at this point. There will be a time for that, but not at this time, because this is just a presentation to the board. The board needs to have that discussion with the department head.
Okay.
Before we could even go forward, because I haven't any way to even respond to any of your questions, because I have no idea myself of what their plan is.
Okay, okay.
Just a question, since we will be getting the plan presentation tonight, can we take comments from Mr. Mulligan after he sees the plans?
Well, I think it would be appropriate. Let's see the plan, let's have the discussion and take it from that point, because we're gonna have this discussion with the department head, and let's see where it is. I'm sure, I am not ready to vote on anything tonight, and I don't think anybody here is ready to vote on anything tonight, and I'm sure there's gonna be some discussion between the board and Parks and Rec, and the Parks and Rec Commission. With that, so.
Okay. The other thing is that, you know, typically, the municipality, before it does anything, still goes through the planning board anyway. It's a courtesy, but, and then the planning board would hold hearings, so I believe there's gonna be ample opportunity. I'm the only one on the board, just for disclosure, who's seen it, because I serve as the liaison to Parks and Rec, and I saw it last Wednesday. But the board hasn't seen the diagram.
It's in our packet.
It's in our packet, but I haven't discussed it. But I think the process is now, it's conceptual, where would things go, what field? You'll see on there, well, we'll talk about it a little later, but there is a rectangular field. There could be, we, in the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we're like, well, what about a baseball, Little League?
I don't really think this is the place to have that discussion.
Right, right. So, what I'm trying to say is, I just wanted to get to the point that I was trying to make, was that this is conceptual, we're gonna hear from the Parks and Rec Director, questions will be asked by the board, and then, I see this as a process, it's not gonna happen in two weeks.
There will be ample opportunity.
Okay. I mean, that's what I think would be, it'd be healthy for everybody involved.
Absolutely. That's why we do it that way, very publicly.
I'll sit back down, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Aye.
Representative Heikel.
Hi.
We need your name for the record.
John Heikel, 483 Mast Road, Pennardville, Goffstown. I wanted to stop by this evening. I received a phone call asking me a question as to why the, why we're downshifting to the towns, and I thought it was important that before, before comments are made and possibly not, that aren't fully understood, I thought it would be a good idea to explain what the state did in their budget, and seeing as all eight of the representatives from Goffstown and Ware voted in favor of SB1 and HB1 and HB2, I thought it would be a good idea to bring it forward to you and give you a chance to hear what we did. I contacted Representative Kirk, and he was one of the ones that actually wrote the budgets. We saw them all, we went through them all, but Representative Kirk certainly is firsthand as knowledgeable as anybody on the state budget, so I thought I'd invite him with us, and he can give you a short presentation of how the state is gonna, how the budget from the state is gonna affect Goffstown.
Okay.
Would you like to do that now, if we?
Yes, please. Thank you. Representative Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Neil Kirk. I live on Mount Dearborn Road in Ware, and I represent the towns of Ware and Goffstown in the legislature. One of the guiding principles in adopting this budget was that it would not knowingly downshift any costs to the cities and towns. And the one area that we've all heard about has to do with pension contributions. What the budget does is to make a whole variety, and this is, by the way, includes what was known as Senate Bill 3, which was incorporated into the budget and passed as part of the budget, so I'll use the terms interchangeably. What it did was to make some changes in the pension system to bolster the financial soundness of the system by reducing the unfunded liability, which for the system alone, excluding the medical subsidy benefit, is about $7 trillion, $7 point, we're talking about the federal deficit, so I'm confusing trillions and billions, was about $3.7 billion unfunded. That means that if the system were to terminate today, we would be $3.7 billion short of paying off the pensions of everybody who's in the system and is entitled to get his pension. If the system continues, obviously, the new money coming in enables us to make the cash payments, but at some point, you have to have a system that is funded at least at 80% and preferably closer to 100%, where in the 90s, this state pension fund was. So, we made a number of changes there, but one of the changes we made was to increase the amount of money that a state or local employee has to contribute to his pensions. Right now, if you're in Group 1, that's teachers and firemen and policemen, sorry, Group 1 is teachers and other municipal employees and state employees, you contribute 5% on June 30th of this year. If you were in Group 2, which is police and fire, you contributed 9.3%. We changed those, so that effective July 1st of this year, the teachers and others in Group 1 would pay 7%, police would pay 11.55% and the firemen would pay 11.8%. So roughly, we raised the rates, 2%, 2.25% and 2.5% in round numbers. We did this with the understanding that the way the pension system operates, that the more, that there are, that there are three sources of funding, what the employers put in, what the employees put in, and the earnings on the fund. The earnings on the fund is about 60, 65%, the rest comes from employers and employees. The way the system works is because, is that the statute says the employee shall contribute so much money, and the actuaries determine how much is necessary for the fund. They figure out based on our standard, which is a five-year rolling average, of how much they expect to get from returns on investments. And the difference between those two and what it takes to make the fund whole, in other words, to make your monthly mortgage payment, is paid by employers. So, in effect, to the extent that the employee's contribution goes up, or the fund is earning more money, the employer's contribution goes down. We added $3.5 million to the fund, out of general funds, this is to the pension fund. We raise the rates on employees, and therefore, based on actuarial numbers, the employer's rates will go down such that the state's contribution towards the municipal share, which is now at 25%, which is going to zero, both in the governor's budget and in the budget that passed, that will be made up for, dollar for dollar, for the state as a whole, by the increased contributions that are being required of employees, and the reduction in the total cost of the fund because of the changes we made in benefit levels, how many years of service you have to, you have to perform in order to get your pension, and all of these other things. Plus, we eliminated the so-called special account, which was used to pay cost of living adjustments, and took that, almost $200 million, and put it into the corpus of the fund, obviously shrinking the unfunded liability, in that case, dollar for dollar by that amount. So, our objective was to make the system sound and to make sure that employers were held harmless, and therefore, I can state to you that not Goffstown or Ware or any town in particular, but for all of the municipalities taken as a whole, they have not been hurt financially, they have been held harmless financially by the changes we've made. The reason why I say, why you can't make that statement for any particular town is, if you've got a disproportionately large number of teachers or firemen or police, you may not be held harmless, or indeed, you may make money on the system. I can't say that for sure, because no town has the exact same percentage as the standard, the average, of these different kinds of employees. So, that was the major change I can think of that might have affected towns but should not. Now, there is one caveat, it has to do with timing. The system's actuaries determined that they couldn't get the new rates to the Board of Trustees of the system and have the board certify those rates before, I think it's August 15th at the earliest and most likely September 15th. Therefore, the rates that the actuaries certified last November, which were not based on Senate Bill 3, which were not based on any of these changes, will go into effect for the month of July, maybe the month of August, but that should be it. There happened discussions on whether or not there's a way to hold the town, the cities and towns harmless, even from that two-month increase, by, through statute, decreasing the contributions that they would have to make for the rest of the year, so that the total for the year would be the same as it would have been had the new system gone into effect on July 1st. That's being talked about. But at the most, you will pay the old higher rates for July and perhaps August, we don't know.
Okay, that, I'm sorry. Because that was a degree of confusion, and again, I think in fairness to boards of selectmen, not just this board, it happened so quickly, and I think everyone kind of knew that there were a lot of things that were intended, but the way it was written was something else, and the timing of things. I can only speak for myself, but I was under the impression from the reading that I did that, that we might be on the hook for half a year, but then it was gonna be coming out of this three, we might get some reimbursement from this three and a half million, so you're saying that's not the case?
The three and a half million went into the pot.
Right.
With the 57 million of additional contributions that employees are kicking in, combined with the decrease in total contributions necessary because of the other changes.
So, if I may, not to, it's safe to assume that we're going to be paying, the municipality will pay the full share of the, of the employees' retirement contribution, absent the employees' own contribution, but we're gonna be paying that 25%.
Yes.
For the next two months.
Yes.
And then after that, we'll be getting a new revised bill.
A new rate.
You will get a new, yes.
Of which that should be.
Which would, which.
It should be relatively a push from what we were paying prior, you know, right now, right?
Let's assume that you were paying $100 in June, okay? If the new rates went into effect in July, on July 1st, you might be paying, I'm making up a number, $98, okay? In June, of that $100, $25 was paid by the state, so you guys really only paid $75. In July, of the $98, the state will pay zero, but employees will pay more, and the system will require less because of the changes we've made. So arbitrarily, take 25 from the 98, you're down to 73, that's your new rate. Now, the problem with this, of course, is that we're not making a lot of money, as you well know, although the retirement system did have a very good 10 and is having a very good 11. But we're carrying over, because we use a five-year average, 2008, 2009, 2007 wasn't too bad. So, to the extent that the earnings, in fact, are not that good, then who makes it up? The employer. So, my example was designed to show you what would happen, all other things being equal. I don't know what's happening with the averaging with respect to the rate of return of the system.
Sue, we had asked the finance to figure out that we had about $160,000, between $155,000, $160,000.
For six months this year.
For six months.
If the.
If.
If the rates stood where they are.
We had to pay, right, if the rate stood up. But you're saying is that that rate is not gonna stand, at most, we're gonna have two months of it. Okay. So that, and I, the reason why I'm so happy that you're here and the rest of the reps are here is because if we have to come up, if we had to come up with $160,000, you know, we're making decisions about not hiring people or laying somebody off, or not doing roads, we kind of need to know. I mean, for us, $100,000, $150,000, you know, is, could, you know, is a couple of jobs, it could be a road, et cetera, so it looks like our responsibility may be in the neighborhood of, say, $30,000 or $35,000, if that.
If it goes to two months, that would be one-third of six months, or one-third of $160,000, call it $55,000.
Okay.
That may or may not get reimbursed, and, and my timing remarks are based on what I've been told, that the, by, the dates by which the actuaries will get the information to the trustees. The trustees meet once a month, they have to have notice periods, once they set the new rates, there's a 30-day waiting period, I mean, there are all sorts of statutory timeframes involved, but I've been told by people who are knowledgeable about this in the retirement system, that the best case is, the August payment will be the new rate, the most likely case is, it will be September, and the worst case, October.
Okay, so we have a $25,000, $50,000, $75,000 that we gotta, okay.
And as I say, there is talk, but it's only talk among House leaders and Senate leaders, that if in fact, you do have to pay two months, should we, should there be some sort of reimbursement mechanism? So that even though you may have fronted some money, over the course of the year, you would be paying the full year at the new rate. So, it's a cash flow.
Gotcha, I hear you.
Don't know, not making any promises, just letting you know that these things are being talked about.
That's pretty helpful.
I have one question as far as the actuaries, and did they give any indication or any projection as to the changes that were made in the system that you referred to, as those changes come in along with the increase in the rates? But as far as the benefits and so forth, that takes a while to flush through the system. Did they give an anticipated timeframe for that to work through the system?
That I don't recall, but they did give us a, what I would call, a back-of-the-envelope estimate of what the rates would be based on Senate Bill 3, but they then have to go back, sharpen their pencils and do their work. So, that information is available, but it would have said, for example, I think this year, the rates were for municipal employees, something like 13.95% or something like that, less than 25%. Next year, those rates go down, I want to say to 11.09%, something like that. That's the information we've had. But in, the takeaway from this is, the cities and towns are to be held harmless. That's why we pony up the extra $3.5 million, because after doing all of the calculations, we had not fully held the cities and towns harmless. Now, this is all, how many employees are there going to be next year in the system? That determines things. There are a whole bunch of unknowns, but based on the best reasonable information that we have, the cities and towns will be held harmless for the pension system.
Okay, great, thanks.
You said the $3.5 million is going into the general pension fund, so it's not being earmarked towards police, fire and teachers?
It will be, as it goes into the fund, and how that's to be done is one of the questions that the retirement system has, because in our haste to get the budget done at 11 o'clock with a 12 midnight deadline, we put this money in, but did not specifically in the budget state that it was to be divided, and if so, how? So, the retirement scratch, system is scratching its head and saying, "What are we supposed to do?" And our assumption, of course, is, yeah, you're gonna divide it proportionately into the police, fire and teachers, and Group 1 and Group 2. But, good question, it's an outstanding issue, and it may require some sort of legislative fix, which could happen in the fall, because we will probably be going back into session for a day to look at overriding gubernatorial vetoes, and we could call a special session or we adjourn to the call of the chair. We could suspend the rules and adopt this kind of corrective legislation. And I'm sure there are other pieces that we're going to have to do, because when you put a budget together, you invariably make mistakes. Indeed, there was one mistake that everybody was unaware of, in the governor's budget, we adopted the area in the House budget and in the Senate budget. Turned out, oh, we forgot to redefine a section of state law that affected the Medicaid program, and without it, we're not, we can't go ahead with a money-saving program that we had wanted to do with respect to TANF, so, the welfare part. So, we're gonna correct that in the fall. If there are any other problems that you find out with, let me, let me know.
We will.
And we'll add it to the list. Or better yet, go through the Municipal Association.
But we'll make sure you're aware of it. Scott?
Yeah, I think, I think that was part of the confusion, because the materials that we did get from the Municipal Association or LGC or others, it was like, you know, we're not sure.
Right.
And there was a lot of speculation going on, that you're gonna foot the bill for, up for our town, $150,000, $160,000, of which money that we didn't have budgeted for, and which was contradictory to what we were hearing all along, so that, I'm glad.
That's because there was confusion over two things, the effective date of the bill and the effective date of when the increased contributions had to be made, and the effective date of the changes to the benefits. We made the benefits changes effective July, January 1st, to give people, employees, a six-month opportunity to say, "Wow, I don't want to go into the new system, I want to retire right now." So, you had a confusion, because one set of changes took place on one date, another set on another date.
And just, that bill also changed the composition of the retirement board.
It did.
And we now, municipalities or the employer now finally has a seat at the table of the retirement board?
There are 13 members on the retirement board. The treasurer is the odd man out. There are four public members appointed by the governor, four members representing labor, one for each of the four groups, and four members representing the employers. The Municipal Association has a seat, I think the BIA has a seat, I've forgotten, but there are four groups, and this is, which means that the board will no longer be in the control of labor.
Correct.
As it was before, where they had eight of the 14 seats. One can expect the governor to appoint responsible peo, this governor, to appoint very responsible public members, not pro-business, not pro-labor, but very responsible people because of the requirement that the investment committee has to have certain memberships with certain business backgrounds and certain investment backgrounds, and the only way these people come in is through the governor's appointees. So, I'm very confident that we have a much more responsible board.
Okay. Good, thanks for that explanation, Sue.
I had one more question.
Sure.
On the spiking assessment, when will that calculator be up? I mean, you have to return it, but I haven't seen it yet.
It should have been a year ago, but they are very reluctant to do anything, to give people information on which they can do planning until the statute has been enacted. I don't know. You need to speak to Kim Francis to find, she's the acting executive director, or better, Marty Karlon, K-A-R-L-O-N, who's their PR person. We have been pushing them to get this up, so that people will be able to make the determination. Spiking, spiking changes don't go into effect until July 1st, 2012, and you guys may be hit, as Portsmouth and a number of other communities, and probably John Stark will be, because these groups have, I'll be very gentle, gamed the system legally by providing opportunities for people to get big payouts in a single year, very near. in a single year, very near their retirement, without having paid in the amount that was required over the person's working life, thereby depriving the system of the earnings on that money compounded over twenty or thirty years. And the net result is that everybody, all of the members of the retirement system, pay a surcharge, in effect, of around ten percent to deal with spiking. In other words, if we didn't have game-playing on the part of the employers and the unions, it's a collaborative effort, uh, our rates would be roughly ten percent lower for everyone, if this didn't happen. And so the new spiking provision is designed to say, you want to do it, it's fine, but you pay for it, don't try to transfer it to someone else.
What about overtime, though, and special detail? How is that?
Special detail, as I recall.
In the formula?
Oh, in the spiking formula? I can't answer that. If you go onto the, um, the website of the retirement system, they have the best chart that shows all of the changes that, yeah. Yes. The changes were so many, I just can't remember them all. So I, that's a very good reference. Uh, I know that, um.
It was our hope that that would have been addressed in the formula, but I, I don't see it in the spiking assessment formula, how it's addressed.
I, I don't know the answer to the question. But again, the retirement system should know. The person who I think is most knowledgeable about that is a representative named Ken Hawkins, out of Bedford. Call him at home, explain to him who you are, tell him I told you to call him, and off the top of his head, he'll tell you exactly what it is. This is his area of expertise.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the board?
One other thing I'd like to say, there were other areas in the budget where, when it was introduced by the budget, would have downshifted, not necessarily to the towns, but to the school districts, for example, school building aid. And the legislature made significant efforts. We put over one hundred fifty-four million dollars back into the budget to compensate, when I say back into the budget, into the governor's budget, to compensate for the areas where he had reduced reimbursements to cities, towns, and school districts. Our, our operating principle was, we're not raising property taxes knowingly. Now, one other thing that you need to know, we made a lot of changes in Health and Human Services. We are unaware that there is any direct correlation between any change we made and, for example, an increased number of people who might come to the town welfare office. But my best guess is, there will be some disproportionately small impact on your welfare budget from what we've done. We reduced, um, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent of the money that we were normally spending on Health and Human Services. There are some people who got services who won't be getting them any longer. Some people will getting, will be getting paid, uh, smaller amounts of money. These people may be coming to your welfare office, may. There are many other places where they might go first, including family, friends, churches, neighborhoods, charitable organizations, and so forth. I tried to protect, um, the town budget by proposing an amendment which passed the House, but not the Senate and not the Committee of Conference, that said, a town did not have to spend more money on welfare in the next year than it did in the prior year, adjusted for population growth and so forth, unless it wished to do so. So that if, in fact, there was some kind of significant downshifting, that the cities and towns wouldn't have to bear that bill. And let me give you the instance that made me think about this. About fifteen years ago, in the mid-nineties, a fellow named Doug Hall, who was a legislator, wrote a paper suggesting that one of the things the hospitals could do in order to solve some of their problems of uncompensated care, you know, you walk into the emergency room, you get treated, you got no money, you go away, and the hospital eats the cost, was the hospital could consider billing the town from which that individual, indigent individual came, for those services. Knowing what we, what the budget did to the hospitals, thirteen of the twenty-six suffered a significant reduction in state aid, uh, I was very concerned that the hospitals might decide to use this as a mechanism to reimburse themselves. So I put in that provision. Whether or not they will, I don't know, but that provision did not make it through. So the town, as it has been for the last couple hundred years, is still on the hook for anyone who walks in the door and you feel is a resident of your town that needs help. You are still obligated under chapter one sixty-five, as you were before. We're good, guys, we're looking out for local taxpayers.
I'm familiar with that bill, because of, uh, LGC put a special committee together, which included Scott Meyer, the mayor of Dover, and, uh, the manager from Franklin.
I, I still don't understand why it wasn't a brilliant idea.
We, we, we kind of liked it, we just wanted to, that's why we put a special committee together, so that, depending on how, uh, how your, your session went, uh, so that they could work with, uh, with whoever was involved with that, so.
The welfare people, the welfare officials group, whatever it's called, came out against it.
Yeah.
Which surprised me, because it was optional on the part of the town.
Anyway, any other questions, Scott?
Yeah, this is for any of the reps. Is it too late to submit, uh, proposed legislation for next session?
Yes, for House, unless it's something that came up very recently.
No, I say this because sometimes in our course of discussion, we're like, oh, we, you know, that's something that would be.
You'll have to go to Andy Sanborn, Senator, no, sorry, Senator DeLaSandro.
Okay. Until what time, what's the time, do you know?
The Senate never sets a deadline.
Okay.
And probably at the last minute, you could do it. But the House deadline has passed. Unless it's something that couldn't have been foreseen, then we can go to the Rules Committee, and they will accept the late introduction of a bill.
Yeah, I mean, if possible, in, in the future, you know, could you just let us know when those deadlines are, in case there is something, some legislation?
As soon as we find out. This time, uh, we had like three, I don't know.
Like, I'll give you a good example, um, like, we had this long discussion about, you know, dog permits and how you get five dollars, but meanwhile, you're doing like twenty-five dollars worth of work or something, and I, I mean, so I mean, there are things that come up, you know, regularly here that, you know, perhaps, you know, if, if this board felt strongly about a position, we could contact one of you and say, hey, would you consider putting in a bill on our behalf?
We, we could, but let me tell you what I think would be even more helpful, and I know this takes more foresight, the municipal association.
I know.
If they adopt it as a policy bill, you get all sorts of support in the legislature.
We do it every two years, we go through policies, but that's, that's it.
So it, it requires some foresight.
I'm just saying, I saw the list of the eight thousand, I'm being facetious, uh, LSRs or something, and, you know.
He just wanted to add one more.
To sneak, you know, to sneak a few in from us, would, we'd be hard.
The, there is another option, um, we can put in an amendment to any bill. If it's a germane amendment, it would be, it would go through the ordinary course. Now, if there's another dog licensing bill in, your amendment would be germane. Or we can put in a non-german amendment, which if the chairman accepts it, would go through the public hearing process and then become part of the bill. So even if it's late in the session, maybe it's January, and you come up with some brilliant idea or some problem that needs to be solved, amendments are possible. Contact us, we're here to help.
If you let me know what it is, I'd be glad to.
Sue?
My last question. I promise. I was just wondering if you had any update on the courts. Um, I understand, uh, there were filings for two injunctions that were denied on the retirement change, uh, one by retirement system and one by employees. However, it's held over for further study or further action?
Those lawsuits are going forward. They initially asked for an injunction to stop everything from happening. The court said, you guys aren't going to be hurt, and even if you are, it's only money, and there's a way to get it back, so the injunction is inappropriate, without in any way discussing or considering the merits of the case, which is what will be going forward. And that could take a couple of years.
Okay.
All right. I want to appreciate your time.
Glad to come in.
Glad to see you.
Thank you. And I appreciate, uh, John Heikels, um, contacting me, because, uh, too often, boards need some information, but they don't get it, and I think John, uh, was very helpful in bringing this to you.
Well, we talked about it, and then I, I said.
That was his inspiration.
And then I said, I'll contact, I called John and Larry, I didn't get a chance to connect with Larry, but did connect with John, and then he said he'd get in touch with you, so it kind of worked out.
Yep.
Okay, is there any other questions of any, you have any questions of us by any chance?
Uh, I've been hitting on Scott, my wife is chairing the Ware, not chairing, she's heavily involved in the Ware two hundred and fifty celebrations, two thousand and fourteen. Scott knows everything about that. We're picking his brain.
Absolutely, we get a, we get a detailed report every week.
I'm selling, I'm selling the master plan.
I get it every night.
As a matter of fact, it was one meeting that we had, we were running ahead of schedule, and because of him, we became overscheduled.
He'll sell you some used signs you can cross out, golf stuff, put the Ware on top of it.
Well, appreciate, appreciate it very much, good to see you.
Thank you. I don't want a summer concert, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
You got it, anytime.
Okay. Any other public comment? If none, we're going to go on to, uh, our next appointment, which is Parks and Rec Director, Rick Wilhelmy. Rick? Good, you?
Wonderful, wonderful.
Good.
Cool day today, it's a wonderful day.
A little different than yesterday, huh?
That's for sure, different than Friday in the heat, so.
So did you eat all the leftover ice cream?
It'll be gone by Wednesday. The kids thank you very much.
You didn't eat a straw for it?
No, it's in the freezer. It's all good.
Okay. You are here for acceptance of two defibrillators from the Friends of Parks and Recreation, valued at twenty-eight hundred dollars, which is under the five thousand dollar threshold, so we don't have to have a public hearing.
Correct.
That's good. I'm going to turn it over to you, you're here for it.
Well, we're, uh, very appreciative of, um, uh, we, we put out a request to the, uh, Friends of Parks and Recreation for, uh, two defibrillator units, one for each pool. And it'll, it's, it's something that is absolutely needed, all lifeguards, all, anybody trained in CPR is trained in how to use AED units. And it's, it's a very integral piece in that early emergency system before your EMS system arrives. And what we decided to do is, actually, we're going to have them during the, um, the summer season. We'll have them at each pool, one at each pool. And then what we will do is, during the, um, uh, course of the, you know, September on, we'll always have one at the building, uh, for different programs that we have going on, onsite. And they are transportable, so we'd be able to bring one to a field if we're going to have a different program going on in the field, too. And we're very thankful for the Parks and Rec, uh, Friends of Parks and Recreation in helping us out with that donation. Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from the Friends of Parks and Recreation of two defibrillators valued at two thousand eight hundred dollars.
There's a second.
I'll see.
Second, and by Steve, any discussion, all of them?
Just, just a quick, Rick, could you, or will you coordinate with the fire department to make sure that the units are.
Registered?
Compatible.
Compatible.
A lot of times with first response type, um, units, if you have the same defibrillator pads, if you're starting to work on someone, then the fire department pulls up, it's just a matter of disconnecting and connecting any units.
The ones that we, the ones we get are actually recommended from, uh, Chief O'Brow.
Perfect, that's all I was saying.
Thank you. And actually, it's the same one that we have upstairs, too. So they're all identical, so it's a similar, a similar unit.
Perfect, thank you.
And everyone's going to be trained on them?
Yeah, a life, anybody that's CPR-trained is trained how to use them.
Test case.
You want to be a test case, Scott? Eat some more ice cream, and then we'll see if we. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Head one scoop.
All right. Any other questions, comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And the other thing that you're here is for a proposed.
We send a, a letter of thanks to the Friends of Parks.
So, I thought.
From the board. From the board, yeah. Could be appropriate as well.
Yeah, we're also here for a proposed design of a field at the corner of Parson Drive and North Mass Road.
Yes. I believe you guys have that in your packet. And, um, the Parks and Rec Commissioners met last Wednesday night and reviewed this parcel of land. And, um, the, the thing that we're looking at is, with all the fields that we have, they're all grass fields. And our grass fields do need some time for rest, so you need to shift your load, your, the number of people playing on a specific field, you got to try and juggle that and balance that. And with the old cemetery field, um, we were able to do that. We were able to disperse the, um, practices that are held on the various different fields. So now, being down that field, the commission looked at it, and, um, the trustees offered this as a possible site. So we looked at it, and we said, well, the best thing to do is to make just a simple rectangular type of field. No bells and whistles, um, basically, you know, a two-hundred-and-forty-foot-long field by a hundred-and-thirty feet in width, and, um, make it have some versatility. Whereas if you want to, you know, have, um, say, a softball practice, a baseball practice, something like that, maybe put a backstop in a corner of one of the ends, so it's out of the way, so it can be still versatile for your rectangular needs, for soccer, that type of stuff. So if you look at, and then the other concern, um, that was well-recognized, is, is parking, and where do you put people, and how do you do those kinds of things? And, um, out of respect for all the, the folks in that area. So what they, what we came up with is, as you drive in the Parson's land, Parson's Drive, excuse me, um, you'll come up, and there's a paved, uh, little section of road that kind of ends on right-hand side, um, which I believe is like the end of the, the land, the parcel on that side. So that's, that's where vehicles would drive in, and we'd make a spot for at least twenty-nine vehicles to be parked, put a row of some trees across the front, give it a little, um, little buffer, as far as where the field is located. The trees along the, um, Mass Road or the one-fourteen side would remain. Try to make it the most simplistic as far as grading goes, as far as moving earth and things like that. And go from there. The talk was around this, uh, this parking area. You know, it is an area that does receive, um, flooding. So do you make it a gravel section so it can drain quickly and easily on its own? Which is probably the best suggestion. So that's pretty much, pretty much the design. Not a lot of bells and whistles.
I have a couple of questions for you, what was the size you set of this?
Two forty.
This is the field here, because there's nothing marked on what I have, that's why it didn't mean anything to me. But this is the field?
Yes, it is.
And what are the mentions of the field?
Two forty long. One thirty width.
One thirty width, okay. Steve?
Regarding the drainage, did you talk with EPW? I'm, I'm sure they're somewhat familiar with the area, did they have any recommendations or thoughts of your plan?
Well, what they thought was, you know, if you did pave it, then you have to put some kind of drainage system in there so that it'll drain properly. If you put, um, a gravel type of base with, um, layers of that, then it'll drain naturally on its own, which is probably the best way to go, is that way there, it's not disruptive, it just will naturally drain on its own.
Lot less cost, too. What drains, the parking area or the field?
The parking area.
Right, so in other words, there's no asphalt on it?
Exactly.
You're putting on, because.
But you are, according to, uh, the construction contour lines, uh, you are elevating the land in the area of the proposed parking.
I'm not sure, David.
Because there's no value on these contour lines, but it looks like, to me, you're putting some fill in that area.
It'd probably have to be raised a little bit, yeah. And maybe that's where we put in the layers of, um, gravel, et cetera, for, for proper drainage.
Yeah, just to, um, kind of give the board some additional information, uh, when I met with Mr. Mullian last evening, he provided some pictures of the, um, of the spring runoff.
Did you mean for me to have this?
Both, there's two sheets for each. And I'll send one, there's one for Sue as well.
It's all the same, there's, just give.
Yeah, two, there's one map and one set of photos. Yeah, two, there's one map and one set of photos.
You can tell me.
There you go, one more. There we go. So if you refer to your plan, the, the one-inch equals eighty feet plan that you have in your packet, you'll see you have one-fourteen down at the bottom, the field on the right, and Mr. Mulligan's house on the left. That's the one that's in your packet.
Yeah, I know, I know where his house is.
On the photo that shows the top of the fire hydrant is taken from Parsons Drive, just in the area of the S on Parsons, excuse me, in the area of the fire hydrant symbol, which is maybe a half inch up the sheet from Parsons Drive. You'll see it on the left side, just below that little culvert symbol, right here. And it's looking towards the, the woods on the left side.
As I go up Parsons Drive?
To your left. It's looking, that, this picture here is viewing the area between Mr. Mulligan's house and his neighbor.
Okay, so as I go up Parsons Drive, on the left-hand side.
Left-hand side.
This water is on the left-hand side across the street. Okay.
The photo of the two homes, showing the two homes is, is another view of that. And then the third photo is actually showing the right-hand side. That's the field.
I got a question regarding the photo. When was this photo taken? In other words, was this during one of those heavy flood seasons? Is this a normal event? Cause I, I'm kinda wondering, with the fire hydrant, I can't imagine that we put a fire hydrant where it floods like that every year. Well, I hope not, anyway.
It never did.
Correct. This is, this is a cumulative event. This, as Parsons Drive was developed, more and more water accumulated. All of this water drains into that swamp, that water area, then drains into the same watershed, that second ab and first ab, and it all comes down here on Church Street. So it, it's, it's constrained by that one little culvert that runs under the, the, the building next door, goes all the way down to the hardware store.
That's what you're talking about, okay.
So I think as more development has taken place, more and more water.
But I think one thing, though, do you, do you know what date you took these photos?
I've been taking them ongoing because, I mean, I lived at Parsons' house for five years. And that before any development happened, before I moved onto Parsons' Drive. And, I mean, as it got worse, I, quite frankly, I knew eventually I was gonna need the picture for some, for some reason. So I've been taking pictures ongoing. I may have more pictures in my pocket, actually, that would give you a pretty good idea of what happens. It shows where the old cul-de-sac used to be, the entrance they're proposing into that field, if you don't mind.
You have any idea when these were taken, though?
I'd say I've been taking them ongoing. There's the entrance, that cul-de-sac, let's be, this is the area where they're proposing to put in the parking lot.
Okay. Why don't you hang on to that? Okay, thank you.
Personally, just as I'm sure all of you weren't aware of the extent of the water, and one of the concerns I have is the field and obviously the parking lot, but the second is if we raise all of that area up enough to keep it out of the water, where is that water going? You know, it's one of those cause-effect. We, we don't, I don't wanna see us solve a drainage issue in that lot and now have neighbors or butters having water in their basements or, you know, increasing a backflow of water.
Well, let me ask this question. Rick, the plan that, or this drawing that you have here, who put this, who put this together?
Uh, the engineers, uh, town, town engineers. We basically took it on a GIF, off of a GIF map and put the field down and then put the parking down.
Okay, are they, are they aware of any of this type of situation?
I don't know how to answer that. Maybe, maybe not, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. Nick?
And if I may, if you remember, the life, the cemetery trustees always told us that they couldn't develop that portion into a cemetery because of the high water table and it constantly flooded. So I think of any board, commission, the cemetery trustees have been over the years aware of this because of the, their inability to use that portion of the land.
Well, the only thing I could say is when we had that discussion with them, nobody indicated that was this. They talked about the high-water table. To me, when you talk about the high-water table, you're talking about the high-water table when you, when you dig a pit, like a test pit, and you have a high-water table because you can't put bodies in there because they're gonna come out, the, the water will work them up out of the ground. So that was my understanding of that. I mean, I guess with this, the only thing I could suggest, unless the board has a different idea, is that perhaps at this point, Rick might be able to go back to the engineer and perhaps take another look at this?
Take a look at it, and I guess my question then becomes, are you basing it off of a picture, an assumption of where this water then goes?
I'm not basing anything off of anything. All I'm saying is to take another look at it.
Well, when I say take an, and I might be rude in asking this, but take another look at what? I mean, do we redesign the layering of the field?
No, they might be able to come back and say to me that this photograph was taken around a one-hundred-year flood. I have no idea. We don't know when this was taken.
Okay, right.
I don't even know if it was taken this year, to tell you the truth, because I don't have the date that this photograph was taken. All I know is that we have this photograph that's been presented to us with it.
Yeah.
And if they take another look at it and perhaps look at it and say, maybe that happens, I, I'm sure that whoever owns that fire hydrant would be aware of this, if this is, is this a regular occurrence or is this, and I don't know the answer.
If I could, first, I'd like to go back in time a little. We, we started looking at athletic fields several years ago, I think, when the, when there was some, some possibility that us, the villa was being sold and we were gonna potentially lose the, the baseball fields. And, and that prompted us to look at other land, and that was part of the reasoning for the Barnard purchase. We looked at the, the mineral rights, and once that was done, we could develop that into ball fields. We now have CIP projects where the high school is looking to develop their own track behind their school with a turf field, an artificial turf field, so that they could get more use out of it. You're not looking at having to rest a field, which takes some load off of Barnard Park, which we're also looking at CIP projects to, to renovate Barnard Park. Last meeting, there was a big discussion on what Public Works is gonna be able to do this year and whether or not we're hiring a laborer, if, you know, what the priorities are. I know the, the increased shoulders on Mass Road was kind of put at low priority. I, I don't see this project being any higher priority than in the things that we, you guys talked about last week. So I don't see anybody playing on this field this year.
Oh, no.
No.
Maybe next year.
Two years, yeah.
We're looking at developing Barnard and getting some other fields there. To me, looking at this, I think the pressure, the immediate pressure we had, that urgency to find additional athletic fields has kind of diminished. I think we should explore some simple solutions to buy us some time until the high school's done, until Barnard has a field, a field or two. One of the simplest, let's approach Goffstown Water Precinct and see if they would allow us to cut some grass and line a field. Nothing major, not leasing it for fifty years to, you know, Screaming Eagles, but just a simple one-year lease. Let us play some soccer games on a field. They've got parking there. It's perfectly, you could fit three of these fields in their grass and not do anything. But that may buy us a year or two to see, well, let's take a look at that in the springtime and see if it's suitable for building a field and incurring costs. Let's see if maybe we can buy a year or two and, and get some other fields developed on Barnard or the high school turf field. I think as Selectman Gross said last week, you know, there are things we say we're gonna do, but then things are thrown our way and we have to make changes. This might be an example where let's say, okay, you know, let's just hold off a little and see if we really need to expend time, effort, and money into, you know, a field that may or may not be truly usable based on the water and, you know, go from there.
You know, I, I spoke with Mr. Mulligan, I don't know, about a year or two ago about that field. And I've, I've always taken a look at that, at that, cause initially, before we even had the Barnard land purchase, I'm thinking we should look at our existing inventory of land, and, and that one looked like something that had some potential. And, and quite honestly, I, I looked at this piece of property very similar to the way you, you view the, the water precinct properties, that it is relatively flat. It is relatively turnkey. I have to admit, in, in the last two years that I've been following this piece of property, I've never seen water like this, but I, I have to trust, you know, one of our neighbors saying, hey, yeah, this, this did happen. I don't know if it happened during the, during those hundred-year flood events or not, but it certainly is prone to it. But that being said, I don't think, in my own personal opinion, and I've listened to some of the commissioners, I don't think anybody is thinking that this is going to be a huge expense, that it would, it would simply be trying to level it out a little bit, take out, you know, that crown, and just have it so that there can be some practices, that there wouldn't be, if, if you all know the condition of cemetery field, that wasn't exactly the greatest field in the world. It's probably one of the worst fields around. But it served its purpose for, for practices. And I think with minimal earth moving, this is the same thing, albeit even if it's, doesn't have a regulation soccer field. So the problem when you get into things with the water precinct and others is that you're always at that, you know, one year, you gotta keep renewing, and then there's liability issues of people parking. And when it's, when it's, when it's town property, it's something that we kind of endorse. So I, I think we should obviously take a look at these, the, the possibility of it being in a flood, a flood plain. That's our due diligence. We'd be foolish if we didn't do, but we can then always come back and say, you know what, we gotta scale this thing back. Maybe it's not suitable for as large as what it is here, because this is actually underwater. But maybe what it means is that it is a little league field, or it's a smaller field where, you know, six-to-eleven-year-olds play soccer games. Because if you've ever seen, like, Tri-Town Soccer, I've coached it, I mean, they, they play all their games on the outfield of Mountain View Middle School. I mean, and there's plenty of spot, space here for that. So I, I just don't think we should poo-poo it. I, I think we have to do our due diligence, but I, I still think it's a viable piece of property for us to pursue with minimal effort. It's relatively flat. You can see that from the contours.
Well, that's the reason why I thought that if Rick brought that back to, into engineering, to take a look at that. I mean, you know, and one thing I have to add, you know, even in the villa fields, the first, yeah, the first field on the left-hand side coming here, you get a little rain in the afternoon, and you've got three inches of water in that field.
Is it all right, Dr. Smith, I'm looking for a question? Having lived in an area that flooded, and I've had several major floods during the Mother's Days, I look at this picture and I say, major flood. I, you don't remember when you took, I mean, normally, like, normally when you see a, a weather-related event like that, you're taking that picture. You kinda remember, you wouldn't remember if it was a few years back with those floods or not.
Again, I got tons of them. I mean, I take, any, any year that there's higher water than there should be. Originally, I mean, I spoke
But I mean, the, the field is gone in this picture. I mean, you're saying that's a yearly thing there?
Not that bad. I mean, I've got a whole slew of pictures, but I've taken them, what, originally I started taking them because when Jack Hill Martin originally developed that and he put in that small culvert, we mentioned to EPW, that small pipe's not gonna handle the water. And it doesn't. You know, that's coming through there. And of course, as I put the houses in, the whole topography changed. Water was running six ways to Sunday. I mean, the man on the, the first house on the right, his house, he's got three pumps running in the cellar every spring, every spring. You can hear him. And he, I, any change of soil movement, I believe, is definitely gonna affect him. I mean, I'm high up enough that it lifts up right up, as you can see in the pictures, up to my patio. But I've never had water in my cellar, fortunately, because it's very sandy up there. But I, I say I've got all sorts of pictures that each year I took because I, I, I know, I knew eventually something was gonna happen up there. I mean, when I moved in there, quite frankly, I knew I was gonna have quiet neighbors eventually. It's gonna be a cemetery. But I didn't see, I didn't think this was gonna come about, you know?
Dave?
These pictures, nevertheless, these pictures do show that the water between your house and your, your neighbor further up Parsons Drive, that water is flowing over, just barely over the road surface, and then across the street onto the town land.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Well, that's where it's going over.
Because the culvert isn't, can't take that flow, so it's backing up and just barely cresting over the road.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you, you see the swamp just between the old cemetery field and the new proposed field. I mean, that's right up top, which, I mean, with that new wall put in, I think you're gonna find even back in it further with that new wall that was just put in. There's a lot of changes in the way the soil's been moved around at the new cemetery, at the old cemetery field. I think that all these changes, I think, I make a big difference to the way the water's flowing. There's already problems which are very evident.
It may not be just the culvert. It's, once that water goes on the other side of where the field is, is, how does the water get out of there? You mentioned that, Nick.
But there's two
If the water can't get out of there, then it does back up and the culvert becomes
One more reason for it to go back to engineering.
And I guess that, that was my concern, is if you look at the, the larger of the two plans, the parking area is between those two new contour lines. Because if you stand at that little apron, which is existing now on Parsons Drive, that's the lowest portion of that lot. So that area has to be raised up. And once we do that, where are we pushing that water that would normally be accumulating there? And I think if any resident came to the town saying they wanted to do that type of land movement, we would require them to do drainage studies and, you know, look at the, the impacts on a butters. And, and I think we have those rules, not because we want other people to do it, but they serve a purpose. So I would think at a minimum, we would wanna do the same thing and look at what we will be doing to the, to the water in that area.
Another, if I may, another proposal was they actually put the parking lot in the front. But then I guess there might be concern about, you know, is it too close to the visual confine of the neighbor? You know, that kind of thing, too. So that, that's another thought. You know, and you shorten, instead of having a two-hundred-and-forty-foot field, you shorten your distance of your field and you put your parking in the front. You know, like, those are your options.
Dave?
When you make drawings like this to bring back to the board, again, put all the houses on it, please. Not just
Sure, that's not
Sure.
No, I like, there's other houses that could have been on this drawing.
Yeah, but he doesn't, he didn't make the drawing.
I know.
I would be glad to have that.
Person who makes the drawing for you, make sure they do that.
I understand.
So you're saying one of the options could just be coming in from Parsons Drive, just front and parking on the field?
It's not on the town's
And then, right, you know, it's not on the town's GIS, cause we need a flyover.
Look at coming in from, maybe in that same little roadway right there, and then just have the parking come down across the front. But you have to be respectful of the visual confines, confines of the, the other people.
Where did this come from?
I, I did that myself.
On where?
Just based on the contour lines and the photos.
Okay. Because I think that's, I mean, I'm looking at, Sue brought up the GIS, and you do see
Through, through the contour lines.
See this, which is, which is, which is a swamp, basically.
Correct.
A wetland and surrounding wetlands, but you don't see any of this. I mean, to me, this is a, that would be like saying that, you know, I've been to your house during that Mother's Day flood, that, that no one could ever live there, you can't recreate there because it, because for two weeks out of the last fifty years, it was flooded. I mean, that's a pretty unfair representation. That's just my opinion. I mean, I'm, I'm not disputing this. Obviously, it was taken at one point. I don't know when it was taken.
Scott, all, all that is there is to just show visually where those pictures are indicating. That's it.
Okay.
Any other questions of Rick? Do you have any questions about this?
No, so I'd be glad to go back and, I guess, relook at this.
We have a good segue, though, if you wanna let us continue on Parks and Rec, since Rick is here.
As far as what?
Well, it has to do with some of this, has to do with the Barnard property. And, and we heard a presentation, and I think if there's questions, Rick is here to answer them.
Questions on what?
Well, I have a Parks and Rec report towards the end.
Okay.
But it may involve questions that you may have.
Well, then Rick can stick around until we get to the Parks and Rec report.
I'd be glad to do that, if you want. That's fine.
Couldn't we jump to that instead of having you wait all night?
I mean, you did it for Neil Kirk.
Nick?
In the meantime, could we also reach out to the water precinct? And see if, because that could give us a field this fall.
I think that's a great idea.
When we, when we might need it.
Need a motion for that? I'll make that I'll make that motion, if you want to.
No, I don't think we need a motion, just see what happens, it may tell you where to go, too.
Well, they were very kind, I mean, don't they have, like, do they have dog training in the back?
Right in the back, yes.
Yeah, so they have, they-
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, okay? Now-
I will look, we will look into that.
The dog training, or the-
Yeah, everything.
We could start dog obedience, we could do that.
Okay, now, you mentioned something about, we'll jump out of order here for a little while. It's your request that we go out of order a little while?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
For your Parks and Rec committee report, do you wanna do your committee report now?
I would, only because we did get a presentation, and I'm gonna talk, Rick and I can chat a little bit about that presentation, as it directly correlates to what we're talking, what Nick brought up before about fields, regarding the Barnard land that we purchased.
Okay, since we're so close to the 7:15 for your report, I'll let you do it now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
At last Wednesday's Parks Recreation meeting, we had a gentleman, Mr. Huntsman. He is a, I guess, what would we call them, civil engineer, and they do plans for athletic complexes. They actually worked with, they're working with the Goffstown School District, and they used to do that in the past, the Field of Dreams. So they were involved, I'm trying to think of the Stadium Committee, that's what it was. They've also worked with other communities, and he was actually brought forth by Howard, who is the Athletic Director at Lundendary, and they've used his services. Essentially, what we talked about was, with regard to the Barnard land, we really need to get some professional assistance. This is not something that we have, you know, the expertise in locally, whether it be our own engineering, et cetera. We do need some expertise, and, you know, how do you kind of build, you know, or design a park? Or athletic fields, and maximizing field space. So it's very similar to creating, he suggested, which I think the board unanimously endorsed, was the creation of a master plan for that piece of property. The board, the Parks and Rec Commission have already done a lot of the foundation work. They've interviewed, what, about eight different-
They interviewed all the private entities as far as athletics go, your two different soccer, you know, tri-town, tri-town recreation soccer, tri-town united soccer, Screaming Eagles football, Bayou softball. You know, we've kinda already-
Little League, you name it.
Interviewed the key folks in this network that are in need of fields. And what we did is we had a one-on-one with each of them, and basically said, you know, okay, here you go, what does your organization need as far as fields, how many fields? Concession stands, bathrooms, parking, storage, et cetera, you know, all this different information. And we basically compiled all that information, so we have all that as a resource, as far as what their needs are. And Mr. Huntress-
Huntress, that's, I'm sorry.
Huntress made that strong suggestion that you need to get in touch with these people, and as a combined effort to try and figure out all those needs. So that's when Scott is saying we're kinda already making forward progress.
So the Commission had a long discussion about this, and they made the decision that they would like to proceed with having Mr. Huntress provide them with a master plan. And to use funds from the impact fee account that they have to fund it. The price tag was, he said, five to $10,000. And basically, you get a plan, he will give you all your conceptual drawings of where fields would be, not just fields, but utilities, you know, you name it. It will not be full engineering, so if at any point we decide that we're gonna embark on this plan, then you would need the civil engineering, you know, to make that happen. But this is more, more conceptual-
And it kinda shows you topographically, too. What they do is, it's kinda like Photoshop.
Yeah.
They'll take things and they'll Photoshop it onto the property with the contours and everything.
Pretty amazing.
So it really gives you a much better vision of what this could really look like.
They also, this gentleman has worked with other groups that have done exactly the same thing that we envisioned doing, and that's a 10- to 15-year plan, where we're gonna excavate reclaim, excavate reclaim. So he's already has experience doing that. And I think the board, the Commission was unanimous in the sense that we have to have a good plan. If we don't have a good plan, then we're wasting, we're wasting time, we're wasting resources. So the board, the Commission wants to proceed with the master plan, using impact fee funds of up to $10,000.
To exceed $10,000.
Not to exceed $10,000.
If the Commission is gonna go forward with this, one thing that you might do is touch base with Brian Rose, because Planning Board has-
Grants, right.
No. The Planning Board had a presentation from Southern New Hampshire about the impact fees, and we're looking at changes to the impact fees. They are based on what's in CIP, projects that are in CIP. And one of the things I brought up was, was we had other impact fees, such as the Parks and Rec and impact fees, because the one that they were, Southern New Hampshire was looking at is the school impact fees. But the Planning Board is also considering looking at the other ones and seeing where the fi- I think it's five-year periods that the impact fees have to be updated, so, to see where the Parks and Rec one is. So that's one thing, just-
Okay, so that's another-
Coordinate that with Brian, if that's gonna go forward, coordinate that with Brian Rose, so at least he know, he is aware of it, and if this discussion does come up about the Parks and Rec impact fees and the methodology, how they arrived at, that they're at least aware of them.
So are you saying that what we need to do is find out where we stand in that five-year mark, as far as-
No, 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 it's got nothing to do with where you stand.
That's an aside.
It's with different impact fees, there's different ones.
Okay.
They get redone, but just so that Brian is aware that there is an impact fee, and he'll know how that's gonna affect-
The calculation method is revisited every five years.
Oh, the calculation, okay, thank you.
And they're doing the school now and roads, right?
Right, right. Nick?
Is there any action required by this board? Are they looking for any action from the board?
I think we're looking for, basically, a motion from the board to allow them to proceed, you know, with getting, obtaining a master plan.
Is that for this year, or are they gonna budget for this next year?
No, they wanna do it by the end. Remember, if you remember, this board asked for a plan by the end of the year.
Right, but the plan that I would like to see, at least, I wanna see public works involved in-
Yeah, and they're gonna be, and that's, and that's one of the reasons why it's so critical that I think we go down this road, because public works needs to have a roadmap, I mean, not only a say in the process, but they need to know, how is this all gonna play out, whereas when we excavate and staging. And I think that's where I think, that's where the big help will be, because you can, you can figure out which part of the property you're gonna deal with.
Well, we explained that, Phil.
Just wait a minute, before we start doing any excavation of that, what has to be determined in that plan is what material is where. And then part of it is, is what are the materials, and what is the projections of the materials that we need out of that? So I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see the horse being driven by the cart. I would like the horse and the cart to be able to go to the same place together.
And you're correct in that, because I had spoken with DPW, and they're wondering, well, what can we do first in correspondence to how it works? So, and as Selkman Gross said, and I agree with both of you, is that they will coordinate with that, because DPW's saying, we can't move on that till we understand what the plan is. Parks and Rec says, I can't, we can't do anything unless we know what the plan is, so it does make sense. But if we need a motion, I'm gonna go forward and make a motion that we do proceed. What, you wanna comment first?
No, I'm just, after you make your motion.
Okay, I proceed that, with the motion that we do go forward with allowing Parks and Rec to work with DPW in providing a plan, and that to exceed $10,000, is what you said?
Uh, yes.
Not to exceed $10,000, and that plan will be done by what date, by December, or?
End of the year.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Nick?
I guess my question, which would be for the town administrator, is mechanically, how do we do that with not having appropriated? Do we need to take it from another area?
Impact fee funds.
Typically, we budget for the use of impact fees.
Right, we can't, we can't expend more than we've-
Right.
What our budget has said we're gonna spend.
Yeah, I have, I have lots of process issues, that being the first. Because typically, we have always, this was the first year that we had, and it was not in, on our side, it was on the school's side, where they requested a lot more than what they budgeted to use for a study. And the board released it, because their study ended up being so much more, but it was, but they did have an appropriation line, they're just overspending that. But typically, we've always budgeted for the use of impact fees.
But let me- So impact fees, they, they're there, but you still, just so I can be clear-
And they can be released by the Board of Selectmen.
So what you do is, annually, you have to put in a request to use those impact fees?
That's how it's, Ben, I'd have to review the impact fee.
But let me just ask a question, didn't we use Parks and Rec impact fees for something on the rail trail?
That just came up, that wasn't budgeted either, that was eighty thousand.
We set aside, well, we set aside $9,000 for the culvert construction that was done last fall.
Right.
The ultimate bill only spent nine, $6,500 or so. But that, that wasn't a budgeted amount either. We, we, the, the eighty thousand dollars from the impact fee fund that will be matched to the federal grant, Transportation Enhancement, that now shows up on the CIP as an expense in 2012, and also revenue in 2012.
Because that was not, we did not, that wasn't decided to use it all within the same year.
Right.
That's what's different about this.
The grant, the grant, the impact fee shows up as an expense in 2012 in CIP, and it shows up as revenue from those.
And the road money has been done the same way, to offset the road plan. We budget revenue each year to take out of impact fees.
So, is there another way of doing this?
I'd have to review the ordinance itself, the impact fee ordinance, to see.
Why don't you modify your motion subject to review by the-
Can it be treated as unexpected revenue?
Unexpected revenue?
Yeah, which goes into the general fund anyway.
So you do a public hearing to accept and expend unanticipated revenue? It's kinda hard to show that's unanticipated revenue, because it's been sitting in a pot.
Then how do we do it for the culvert?
What culvert?
We spent $9,000, did we not?
Last fall.
Yeah.
To add, yes, to add to a-
From capital, from that same fund.
To add to a $25,000 state grant.
Appropriation, oh, okay.
Right, and we didn't-
And you got the appropriation to accepting unanticipated revenue? That's how you got the appropriation?
So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you have money, I don't have the statute in front of me, but you have money in a fund, and you're allowed to expend it by vote of the boards, whether it be Board of Selectmen or School Board.
No, Board of Selectmen, for everything.
Okay, for all of them, because we're just a custodian for the School Board. So the money is there.
Yes.
And it's just a matter of-
Mechanism.
The mechanism.
And I'm saying is typically, the way it's been done on a regular basis, and budgeting for it.
So technically, we could, we could even structure this whole plan where we make a small payment now, and it's final large payment on January 1st, because it would be budgeted January 1st. I mean, this, this, I think-
Well, let me, let me check the ordinance to see.
I think the issue, I think the issue is, you know, for me, I'm gonna be blunt when I say this, is that this goes back to what we keep talking about, how everything just takes forever to do. And we set aside a goal to try to have a plan in place for this parcel of land, which will be, you know, we've had it for almost a couple of years now, and then it'll be another year before we have a plan, and I just, and it's not like it's, if this was $100,000, I would be with you 100%. But this could be $5,000 or $7,000, it might be 10, but it's under $10,000, and we're making this as if it's like, we're gonna bankrupt the town of Goffstown. If we go ahead with monies, which is, this is the specific purpose, is for the expansion of facilities.
Yeah, I think it's just a process question, and I would like to review-
Yeah, I think that's all it is, it's a process question.
Review the ordinance itself, and-
Okay, David?
Get back to you next week.
Rick, you started off this conversation by saying Mr. Huntress is, could be, could develop a plan for the Barnard property. But will that plan also encompass the fact that there's two, two needs for the material in that ground? One need is to backfill Perry property to some elevation, which we don't know what that elevation is. And the other one is material that's gonna be used for the next 20 years, for roads.
I think I can answer that question.
So is that part of what he'll be contracted to look at?
No. No, he basically is taking all of these-
No.
No, he's taking all these plans, everything that the stakeholders have requested. So let's just say, for an example, that Little League wants Little League fields, and football needs football fields, and we need a concession stand, and we need, someone said, hey, we'd like to have a swimming pool, whatever. He would take all of those things and try to fit them on-
Into the puzzle.
Into the puzzle, what would work out best with a potential trail, parking, et cetera.
At both parcels?
Yes, both, both the sand pit and the other-
Because Perry parcel wasn't mentioned in, of course, I just-
But it has nothing to do with the engineering piece of as to, we're going, we need to increase the elevation by this and create under drainage, he did talk about under drainage and all those things.
And I think you're right, I think that's the key piece, to have a concept of where this fields, whatever, everything, buildings, et cetera, are gonna go. And then the key integral piece is with DPW saying, okay, how do we make this whole thing work? But if you don't have a conceptual drawing of where things are gonna go based on the structure of the land, you can't make any decisions. So you at least need a concept-
I understand that this fellow you might contract with, he can tell you what elevation the former Perry property has to be raised to, to provide underground, you know, drain.
He might need information from public works to achieve that.
Depending on what fields might go in that location, and the drainage. He can tell you what elevation it all has to come out to.
Yes.
The wild card here is where will DPW be excavating over the, you know, little at a time over the next 20 years?
And that is a good wild card. That's where we all gotta get in the sandbox and play together and say, how are we gonna make it work?
Thank you.
You're absolutely right.
My, I would be negligent if I didn't ask another process question, and that is regarding our purchasing policy. Five, $10,000 is over your limit, right? You have to go out for sealed bid when you get to that amount. So my question, of course, we do have clauses in our purchasing policy for sole sourcing, but I think it would be tough to make an argument to sole source something like this, because usually you sole source when you don't have competitors, or for other compelling reasons. And I'm not sure, I don't know what the compelling reason here. However, I also heard Selkman Gross say that the school is using these people, so did the school go out to bid, and is it something you could piggyback on?
I don't know, no, I think we went out to bid.
Can I make a suggestion, then? Why don't we just hold off and have Rick, Sue, Public Works find out these answers to these questions and come back to us?
Well, I think with respect to going out to bid, and again, I don't, I don't think that there are that many, because we did ask this person, I mean, and we asked Howard, too, Howard's an AD, you know, how many of these people, you know, do this type of work? And there aren't that many who design athletic complexes. So I don't, in terms of, you know, going out to bid, I don't think that that process, for one, it'll take months to come up with, and it'll cost us probably more money than we're gonna spend. By the time we do RFPs and all these different things, we're gonna, we're gonna have thousands of dollars just into getting a bid.
Well, Scott, I understand what you're saying, but you know, the difficulty that I have here is that we, over time, we develop these because we're dealing with public money, and a process of how to handle public money. We have a process, if the board wants to suspend that process, if the board has the ability to suspend that process in the purchasing policy, the board can do it, if the board wishes to do it.
No, I understand that there is a process, and like I said, and again, I think if this was a $100,000 plan, $50,000 plan, $25,000 plan, I probably would be totally okay with it. But, you know, we did, as a board, we talked about a goal of trying to have a plan, a master plan in place for this property by the end of the year, is one of our goals. And now we have, you know, we started that process, and we're like, you know what, we do need some professional help in doing that. And I just think it's gonna take, it'll be next year, it won't happen.
Scott, I understand, but when we had that discussion, we never said, well, gee, let's put $10,000 in the budget for- Scott, I understand, but when we had that discussion, we never said, well, gee, let's put ten thousand dollars in the budget for the master plan.
Right. I mean, it's definitely that something has come up that required us to step back, the commission to step back and say, you know what? If we're gonna do this thing right, we really should get, you know, a professional to assist us. And I, and I think the stumbling block right now is we have a five thousand dollar limit on a going out to bid, I think. Um, that's one, and, and then the other thing is, you know, the use of the capital fund. I don't think those are insurmountable. That's just my, my-
No, I, I'm not, but I, I think when we preliminarily had that discussion, okay, we talked about a plan, that we do have a plan that was done by a resident. Okay, we talked about a master plan, we talked about, uh, working with Public Works to find out what, what the town needed, and we looked at it, and I think in my mind, the master plan was using what we had already to come up with our master plan, not necessarily a professional master plan. Uh, you know, I mean, it's just the difference of who's doing it. So, now we're talking about expanding from what I envisioned as our master plan to this grandiose master plan that we never put money to have for. And I don't have a problem going forward with that, this is, it's just process.
Right.
I think too, that the, you know, the, the thing about what this gentleman does and their firm does is that topographical map, that picture that it gives you is real life picture. So, when you're out there and you're trying to get your other entities involved with this process, which is a very key process, it gives them a darn good look of what it really is, so that they can get a very good conceptual view and say, wow, yeah, we wanna get on board with that, that's really good.
For market, I mean, you're trying, we're trying to do a private partnership.
There's, there's two, there's two facets here, you know, you're, you're going, you're reaching out to your, your private people to also try and help you with this process. They need to see something that is pretty darn good to make a decision, and they're still gonna make that decision.
Rick, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. What I'm saying is when we initially discussed this, okay, and I can't speak for the other four here. What I'm saying for myself, when we had that discussion of the master plan, I envisioned working with what we had with this, to be able to work with as a master plan. Now, we're coming up with, have something visual so she, we can talk to other, uh, show other people that are non-governmental entities with the town. I mean, we never had, I mean, this, this is going further, and I'm not, I'm not knocking it, I'm not saying anything, but it's, it's, this is a little beyond with what was that general understanding of, or what I perceived at that point.
Yeah, I think the uniqueness of this, of the reason why the commission feels the way, strongly the way they do is because it is going, the intent is to be a public-private partnership. And as Rick said, what this plan, and when, when he talks about these three D Photoshop overlays, where you actually, they take the, it's, it, it looks like you're looking at a picture of an actual field on there, and it's amazing. When the commission or this board wants to have discussions with these eight or ten private entities or significant donors who might wanna contribute money for something like this, it's much easier to say, this is the vision. When you just look at a two, uh, two D drawing, it's, it's one thing, but when you see it three D or in, in a, in a, in a much more professional, uh-
We see them at the planning board all the time.
Right.
I, go ahead, sorry.
Nick?
The other option can, are there budget lines that can be identified to take this money from? So that we're not looking at the impact fees and we're working within this year's budget. And then the process is very simple. Go out to do a, you know, a quick sole source or piggyback off the high school, but we, we use money that's already been budgeted and then hold off and use the impact fees towards the costs, once we start the construction. You know, and then we could approve it relatively quickly in getting it, and get it done.
I just don't know where we're gonna find that in the budget.
Oh, I, I, I don't either, but I'm saying that is-
I mean, we held off hiring a laborer.
I understand, but that's, that's the other, that's the other process, if it, you know, if somebody wanted to abstract it.
I know, but, but the, the difficulty I have with that, again, is that's, that's something that is not planned, that you're coming up with, and all of a sudden, you know, you're looking, you know, on occasionally doing that, I don't have a problem with it, but, uh, I just don't like to make it a regular practice, do you?
And, and I think what happens a little bit here too is that, at one point, the Parks and Rec, you know, Parks and Recreation, we took eighty thousand dollars from there, and we, when we put it towards the tra- Rails to Trails, you know, and here you're looking at a project at this point in time that it is gonna take a little bit of, you know, of, of capital to get a clearer vision to what's gonna happen, how it's gonna work with Parks and Rec, and now we're kinda putting us, it, it's, we're, I, I understand there's this process we have to go through, but it's kinda stalling it out a little bit. I don't think it's, it's, it's a big jump from, uh, how much we took from Parks and Rec moved towards Rails to Trails, when we're, when we're trying to do a project of this size, it's, it's not a large amount. And, and I agree with Selectman Gross is that sometimes we get caught up in this few extra thousand dollars that all of a sudden we can't move, and we become stagnant in the process.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, that, that's a process here, okay? And maybe it's just me, okay? But the board, ever since I've been on the board, it is a process issue. We go through a budgeting process. We, we go through a process and identify the money that we're gonna be spending on in the next year. And we go through that process. That money is identified, goes through a process, the voters vote on that money. And it's in the budget for us to work with, okay? I mean, the argument could be made here is that voters have never voted on ten thousand dollars to be put into a study for a master plan.
Can I get clarification, please?
Sure.
When we have impact fees, just for my own, for the future, you have this money in this impact account, whatever it is. We have to, whatever we're gonna use out of that account, we need to budget that in the-
The gross appropriate.
But you need to budget it and plan and say, in fiscal two thousand and twelve, we are gonna end up using twenty thousand dollars to build a new playground. And that has to be in there. And then going through the CIP process, that's where you explain that and say, we will be building a new playground, it's gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars, however, we're using impact fees to get this project completed.
The offsetting revenue.
It shows us, it shows us. So, in the his, in the future, that's how you go forth and do this?
Well, that's one of the ways.
Uh, you know, I, I was just reading the zoning ordinance, and section sixteen point ten has the use of the funds. And sixteen ten two says, effective upon passage of this article, the annual updates of the Goffstown Capital Improvement Program shall contain a procedure for assigning funds, including any accrued interest from all of the public capital facility accounts to specific capital improvement projects related, um, expenditures or debt service. So, it's really, um, a CIP process.
CIP process.
So, when you do, so that's, that clarifies that impact fee goes through the CIP process?
The use of them, yeah.
The use of it.
The project shows up as a construction project, but it is also, it, it shows up as a revenue.
Okay.
Nick? I, I wanna mirror what Chairman DeVanzo said is, sometimes the process is cumbersome when we're dealing with things like this, but it's the process. And when we look back at this whole project, we, we looked at getting a plan, but doing it in-house. And I understand that the opportunity has arisen, but unfortunately, there are still processes, and we just can't say, okay, we're not gonna use the process this time because it's only ten thousand dollars, and it's, we really wanna get this done real quick. Unfortunately, it's the process, and sometimes it's cumbersome, but I think that covers us under all circumstances.
It's, actually, it's, it's, it's a challenge of leadership. And that, and that question, the challenge of leadership is always that, that question of where process, um, where proc- where process gets put up against results. And sometimes the process stops the results, and sometimes results are driven by the process. And it doesn't always fall correctly in each, in each side. And so, right now, we're letting process dictate how the results will be right now.
Well, I, I have to tell you something. I'm a public official, and I'm gonna follow the process as a public official.
First of all, Doc, Doc, raise your voice when you talk to me, I won't have that, okay?
But I would say, I mean, somebody could walk in tomorrow and say, you know, I got a great deal. I got a vehicle for you guys. It's twenty thousand dollars, it, you know, costs a hundred thousand, but I'll give it to the town next week, next week only, twenty thousand dollars. Well, you know, we got a process. We have to have two public hearings, you know, well, for this time, it's a great deal, you know, this process is gonna predict the outcome, and, you know, let's get rid of the process. We can't. We're, we're bound by municipal law, we're bound by certain rules, and I think we have to follow that.
And all I'm saying is that, I understand that, but is there, is there another way of doing this? Well, in the process, I don't want the process to dictate stopping where we're going. If that's the case, and we're driven by that, I, I think it's, I, I think it's one of those times it doesn't work, but, so I'm asking at this point, are there other ways to do this?
I, I think we deal with that pro- that, those other ways a lot of times. I mean, Public Works is a prime example. Many times, the Public Works Director will come in and say, you know, I need to do this, and I've identified this area or this project that came in less, and this that came in less, and I've, I freed up the money, and I'd like to go forward and move on this. And we do it. Process doesn't stand in the way. Um, so, I don't think that's stopping, you know, i- if, if Rick, you wanna come and say, you know what, I'm not gonna do this and this, this year, and I wanna use that money for this master plan, then we'd make-
Yeah, unlike, right, the unfortunate thing is that this is not DPW that has a five million dollar budget, this is a department with a very small budget.
Maybe in coordi- maybe in coordination with DPW, cause this, this does affect them as well, being able to use gravel and sand. So, maybe the two departments can get together and identify funding to be able to pay for this, if we wanna go around the button, you know, work within the process and get this done.
There's also the revolving fund, which is another issue.
But it hasn't been appropriated. We haven't put it into our budget to spend that money.
That money does not need to, does not need-
Revolving funds don't-
Okay.
They're different from special revenue accounts like EMS, that you have to budget for. That, the revolving funds never enter into the budget, they're like an offline account.
How much money is in the fund? How much money is in the fund?
Twenty-some odd thousand?
Twenty-seven. And the restrictions on its use? Would this fit?
It has to be Parks and Rec purpose.
You know, so, I mean, there you go. You know, so if there's money there, I mean, that's, again, now we're working within the process, we can get it done, and-
That's right. That's right.
I'm not opposed to doing the master plan.
I, and what we're, I understand what you're saying, rega- regarding the revolving fund, and I realize we talked about that being for improvement within the, the parks and the recs. And I understand this is important in that process too, but probably not so much the, the intent, because when we come around a budget season, as we look at the facilities within the parks, we were hoping that that, that those, that that re- that account would be used to, to the maintenance of that. I hate to see it get, um, you know, that money taken for this purpose, though it is important.
Nick? Are there improvements to the current parks facilities that you have budgeted for, that you have not expended the money yet? That you could use the revolving fund money for?
We're in the process of, actually, that's gonna be our August, um, uh, mission, to, um, take notice of all the facilities, all the different repairs that are needed, and then to prioritize those needs, um, through this fund.
But in this budget year?
In this fiscal budget year, no.
It's the pools, that was the biggie.
Just the pools, the pool, and we've made those, those changes. Um, but other than, other than the pool, Nick, no. I mean, we made some changes, you know, like the fix siding and things like that, but that all got axed out, so. Fixed roofs, that all got axed out.
You have a question?
No.
So.
So, there's possible though, that, that it could, it could be, uh, taken care of through one of those two ways?
Yes, is it possible?
So, delay it, use of revolving, there's, there's several mechanisms that could be employed to do it.
Okay. So, we have a couple of things then that we need to do, correct?
I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's, 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 it could be a, I think it's something that, I think Rick has to talk with DPW and Sue to, to iron it out, how, how it can be accomplished. Because it does, it does cross over to DPW, and maybe if it happens this year, it happens this year, if it happens next year, it happens next year, or whatever fund can be used to pay for it. But I think it's, we, we, I don't think it's prudent for us to sit on a piece of property that we've, that we've spent money on, you know, with the hope of extracting minerals and, and reclaiming it for public use to just, you know, when you think about it, we have, we're sitting on this Perry property at Sandpit for God knows how long, which could easily be a phenomenal town resource, and we're just nothing.
On, on behalf of the, the commissioners, I speak for, actually, for myself on this whole process. I don't think there's any really true, clear, one hundred percent direction, absolutely, across the board, of where this is going. We have visions, everybody has visions, there's a lot of cooks in the pot, and I don't think there's any clear ultimatum of what is the final result gonna be. And I think it's getting challenging, because you have a group of folks that are eager and ready to roll with this, absolutely ready to roll. But when we turn around, every, every step you get to, the next step, then there's a what if, you know, what? Maybe we need to sit down and really ponder these true steps, and who's gonna do what, and how's, how it's gonna get done. I don't know, I'm just, I feel a little baffled.
Is there a grant, a planning charrette grant? I think we had talked about that once, apply, when is that?
You can apply anytime, they're usually granted in spring, early spring.
Is that something we should look into and, and do a formal charrette? Bring in all the different parties, do have a, a-
The only thing is, is if you're gonna wait till spring, you might as well put the money in the budget, go forward with the-
Well, even if charrette has a cost. So, you may get twenty-five thousand dollars of plans for five thousand, but there is a cost for all the materials. They donate all their, the architects and engineers get together and donate their services, but basically, there's cost for all the materials and-
Can I ask a, another question? I'm a very naive person, and I don't really understand municipal ways and how things go. If we were to go into the next calendar year, or the, the following calendar year, when people change out of office, does the change in focus of what is gonna be done in the community change?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Okay. Sometimes. But generally, you know, when you put, uh-
So, it's put a strip mall there then, right?
Focus of-
We could just sell the land and put a nice Walmart there.
I mean, it's possible, but I don't, I don't see that happening with who's around on the various boards within the next five years.
And, and that's not typical just to municipal governments.
Right.
I mean, international corporations change CEOs, and the direction of the company changes. I mean, it's-
Board of directors changes.
Unfortunately, no one is ever, unless you're a king, uh, you know, you stay in power, nothing ever stays the same.
But I must say, the current boards will always look at the actions of passports and town meeting votes for guidance.
Right.
Right. Right. Um, so, why, why don't we do this? Why don't you get together with Public Works and Sue, and try to express exactly what you expressed about the vision? Explain that with Carl and Sue, and try to just tackle that issue as one of the issues to tackle, and how to go forward with this plan, and if that's the plan you, you, you wanna work with, then come back with the direction of where the money's gonna come from. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, can I, like, recap something for Rick, because if, if you felt that the, there's, the direction is not, it's confusing. And, and again, if I'm off base, any one of you can stop me, but you've got a piece of property, and let's just say it's a big pile of sand, and we're gonna, as we take, and it's, and it's in eight quadrants, and as we take out one quadrant, we're gonna use some of that sand, we're making a castle out of it or something, and then as we take out the other one, we're gonna do something else with it. So, we're, we're removing, building, removing, reclaiming, removing, reclaiming, and at the end, it will be what your concept was of what you wanted in the first place, which was I E. a, a, a set of Little League fields, a softball field, four rectangular fields, maybe, uh, a pavilion, uh, but at the, so, as you are, so you have a clean, right, it's phased in over, over a, I mean, I don't think there's anybody on this table who thought that this was gonna happen in two years.
No.
We, we envision this as a ten, maybe fifteen year process.
One thing you have to add to that though.
If it's gonna take five years, six years to do this, this, this group of folks change.
We will not be here.
No, 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 there's a little bit more involved in this.
Now, do you go forward and all of a sudden that change is different? How do you do that?
We're doing an excavation project here. An excavation project requires a plan and approval from DES. So, this master plan and this final product is going to not only be here. It's our approval to do the excavation is going to be based on a reclamation plan that we, I, I anticipate what we're going to be presenting as the final product is going to be, as what, what Scott mentioned on the piece of paper, that's what we have to provide. We have to supply that to the state. So, even if the boards, some boards change, that's the plan. That's what's been approved. That's the way we have to go forward.
Just as a, as an aside on this, because it's obviously going to take some time to figure out the process. Could someone make contact, whether it's Public Works, Planning, someone with Public Service? Because currently on that excavated land, we have two very high plateaus supporting towers with canyons in between. And whether the towers are moved or the land is, on the, the former Perry property. Whether taller towers can be put into place so we can bring that land down to, to get it more level. But maybe someone could touch base with Public Works and see, Public Service to see what the options are and what the associated costs of those options, so that as we go forward, we can also plan that when we start reclaiming that property.
Do you want to do that through Public Works because they probably have discussed with somebody there and that's?
I've had discussions with Carl about those towers and it simply revolves, we can request anything we want from Public Service.
But there's a cost, correct.
I think, uh.
So, if you, if you want to, if you think you're going to raise the elevation of the Perry property where the deepest pit is, uh, eight feet. But that, those towers are still ten feet above that, then you may want to, you know, what, engineeringally, what is required to low, make the, replace those towers with one that's ten feet higher.
There's no towers, this is poles.
They're poles, they're poles, right. They're not steel towers.
You'd have to put a tower if you were to take the poles.
They're transmission towers. And, um, what it would cost to replace it?
Or could you reduce the island effect and, and just, you know, retaining walls around the existing, you know, what are the options with dealing as we go forward? With, with the existing towers, replacing them, moving them, supporting them?
Pull the ball too high.
So that we can level out that land more evenly.
All right. You got enough now?
Oh, boy, yeah.
You got a plate full?
Well, I appreciate the, the conversation. It was a great conversation.
And, and a second that's on the table. We're going to, do you guys want to withdraw your motion and second?
Well, what was the motion for?
To authorize spending up to ten thousand impact fees.
And to come up with a plan by the end of the year.
Right.
But have we even investigated, you're saying, you're, based upon what we've read, we cannot do it?
No, 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 no. You're going to come back. Exactly, he's going to get together with Public Works, figure out exactly what they need, have that discussion with this, if this other fellow's going to be able to do it.
I'll withdraw my second.
And come back with a plan and tell us what we're going to, they're going to do. How much money is going to cost and where the money's going to come from.
I'll withdraw my second.
Withdraw the motion.
Do you have any questions of us, Rick?
Just take his home number.
I'll read the minutes.
No, they may not be that clear.
I'll watch the video and read the minutes and absorb it.
Be as specific as possible.
We got to do some more homework.
Less than twenty-five pages.
You, me and Carl will read.
Yes, I'm good. I'm very good.
Hopefully, you'll be here next week or two weeks the latest.
Hopefully, yes, hopefully. That's good.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, letting us jump the gun.
No, not a problem. You can stick around.
Was there anything else, was there anything else, Rick? No.
He's going to give us two-hundred-and-fiftieth report. Okay, we'll jump back. Uh, Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, your schedule of meetings are in your packet. Uh, Wednesday, six-thirty, HDC Thursday at seven is Planning Board and seven on Thursday is also Solid Waste. Consensus Folletinade includes EAP warrants, event permits for the Anna Campbell fundraiser after-party on July thirtieth. Jack Hunter McKay Fund Corporation Benefit Ride for motorcycles on July thirtieth. Car wash fundraiser for the Gulfstone High School class of two thousand thirteen and youth group farm stamp. You have a road tracking form for sidewalk easement, map seventeen, lot one seventy-eight. An employee status form, um, due to the end of a probationary period.
Okay, is there a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The assessor recommends a timber cutter, map five, lot forty-one. And a veteran's tax credit and tax credit for service-connected total disability, map nineteen, lot eighteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. You have an email from Alfie Matott, fifteen Cove Street, requesting permission for him to hire and pay for an arborist to cable the limbs of pine trees on town property which overhang his house. If the Board of Slakman is inclined to grant this authority, then the town should require a certificate of insurance with the town named as an additional insured and a stipulation that the property's condition not be altered.
Have we done this in the past?
Have we done? We've allowed people to travel onto town property to do something.
Right.
These trees can't, are healthy trees, but he has a fear that they may, the limbs may fall off.
But we did have somebody do a couple of parcels in the last few, few years though.
Yeah, there was one along the river who wanted to access, uh, his, the trees in his backyard through town property.
And but, and that was the same thing we did with the insurance?
Yes, same thing.
All right.
I'll make that motion to proceed as, uh, recommended by the Town Administrator.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
That land there, is that town land on Cove?
Yes.
That's a nice piece of property.
It, it has a slight, I went there this weekend.
Yeah, I went there last week because I never, I didn't know.
I did, I did meet the petitioner. There is a, a slight access, old access road that comes in from Lynchfield Park.
That'd be a Boy Scout project if you asked me.
Curls down to the lake shore.
I'm serious. That's a nice access to get to that lake.
Yeah, that's what we've been talking about for a while.
We got to make that happen. We should set aside some money.
No, we had that, we had that discussion with Park, with the Conservation Commission about opening up access down there.
That particular parcel drops about thirty feet in elevation though.
Yeah.
In a very short distance where, um, we discussed, uh, a parcel a year ago that a scout might have renovated, you know, did some work on. It's off of Cove Street.
Yeah, they're both within.
But that particular parcel is practically at lake elevation.
It is at lake elevation.
Yes.
To launch a kayak or canoe from there, that would be nice.
You could carry it down, yes. And, and it's big enough for one car to drive in and.
All right. Okay. Next.
Next. Um, motion needed to designate Slakman Dave Pierce to represent the town at the, um, block party at the, um, what tent is it called?
V I P.
V I P tent. And to authorize the chairman to sign the form and letter to effectuate this designation. This is, um, for liquor license.
And that's, uh, what is his official title going to be?
Designating person in charge of, yeah.
Liquor master.
Oh.
Beer Master Dave.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Aye, reluctantly, aye.
Deluctingly, huh?
And I'm attending the training.
Now, if you were going to abstain, then I wouldn't vote because if you, if you can't vote for yourself, I wouldn't vote for you either.
I'm attending the, uh, thank you for sponsoring this training and I'm attending it, uh, Wednesday.
Did you need a ride home?
Uh, they teach you the difference between beer, wine and alcohol?
We'll have, we'll find out. Taste party.
Okay.
At the Board's request, you have a spreadsheet in your package showing, uh, similar three-year history that you saw in revenue. Uh, now you see a three-year history as of June thirtieth for the past three years for expenses. That's a five C.
And let me just ask you one question. Uh, what, these are through six-thirty-eleven?
Yes, for each of those years.
Right, okay. So, it's six months?
Yes.
Slightly ahead of schedule.
So, we have the higher, uh, uh, percentage of, of received revenues?
Than previous years, yes.
In the last two?
We also have higher percentage of expenses.
Expenses.
Right. Any questions, Sue? Okay.
Also, five D, Carl submits enclosed spreadsheet regarding the Pine Ridge Drainage Project.
Is this what, is this what, uh, the Board wanted?
Yeah, but I'm still, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself. I'm still a little confused with where the money is coming from and going. I, I read through it. Am I the only one who's confused? I am? You, you're not confused?
No.
Can you explain it?
We're going to anticipate the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is, uh, budgeted money. But we could get, we're going to get half of it back.
So, we get fifty-seven thousand dollars back?
We're taking seventy-five thousand dollars out of the current road plan. You've already seen that as part of the road plan. So, if you were to, out-of-pocket expenses is fifty-seven, half of the one-fourteen. So, it's fifty-seven thousand dollars plus the seventy-five. That adds up to one-thirty-two in money to pay for a contract. And we anticipate spending one-hundred-and-thirty.
Nice explanation. Now it's clear to me.
I hate to throw a monkey on this one, but.
Sue, you're just throwing a lot of monkey wrenches in tonight.
We did not encumber the one-fourteen. Okay, so we would have to have the public, well, it's, the, the authority's still there though.
The process.
The bonding authority is there because it never goes away unless it's voted.
It's revoked by the Board.
It's revoked at town meeting. It requires a town meeting vote to revoke it. So, the authority is there. We just, when you said it was in the budget, it really isn't in the budget, but we have the authority. Because it wasn't encumbered.
It was a article.
In the special town meeting.
Right, that was ended on May or something like that. We had a special.
Not this one. The first one was.
Special town meeting.
Right.
No, the, the, the original project.
Oh, no, that's right. The original, the.
Project, the drainage project was a special.
It, it wasn't in, it was not in the special town meeting. We had to do that at the regular, the next.
Cost came in higher and so we had to scope down the original project. And this is the, this one went to a regular town meeting, got voted in.
Right. Okay.
So, you do have the bonding authority. You can go ahead with this. And the other, oh, the other point I wanted to make, because it is a special article, you can't use it for any other purpose. So, if you think it's going to make up for a shortfall somewhere else, it can't.
Right, right. It can only be done, only used for that.
I, the question is, uh, since we can't use that money for anything else, do you want to, uh, put another seventy-five thousand with it that we have planned for out of the road plan? Do we want to follow through with that decision? And now we have one-hundred-and-thirty-two available for this project.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't speak for everybody here, but I, I think the voters voted for us to follow through on that drainage when, in that special election. So, it's just a matter, for me, uh, that was never really a question. It was just a matter of where's all this, where's the money, where was it coming from? I was confused. That, that was, that was my, my issue last week.
All right. So, that, so, so you're okay now?
The confusion's gone.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think David explained it.
Anybody else? Okay.
We need a motion now.
I believe we do. Uh, did you have a question there?
Just a quick question. All of the one, the estimated one-eighty-nine is eligible? For our, we only have the one-fourteen. I understand that. We can't, they're not going to.
Right, that's the cap.
Give us any more than that and they're going to forgive half. But if it actually, they're, they're now estimating it probably come in around one-thirty.
Right.
This is, and, you know, drainage pipeline from higher up on Pine Ridge through Mass Road to East Union.
So, potentially just sixteen thousand is coming roughly.
From, right.
From the budget.
Yep.
Right.
And the rest is the, the bonded.
Yep. Fire away, Dave. Make the motion. Let's move on.
Motion to, uh, have Public Works proceed with the Pine Ridge Drainage Project as has been described to us.
Is there a second?
I'll do it. Excuse me.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Also, Carl submits.
Nick, do you have a question?
Just a, just a request. I, I had asked for a more detailed spreadsheet this morning and, um, as Carl correctly pointed out, it really wasn't germane to this discussion. But could we get a recap of the entire?
And with all the money, yeah. Change orders.
Wallace Road Roundabout.
I, I wouldn't support that.
South Mass, I mean, the whole thing, start to finish, including, you know, a budding, making a budding property owner's whole, um, change orders. Everything spread out, laid out. What have we paid on this project, projects to date? And what is the estimated final cost, including the Pine Ridge?
Well, let's leave Pine Ridge. We know what Pine Ridge is, but.
It's kind of the whole thing. It's that whole drainage, green drainage and road project.
Okay.
Where are we? Engineering fee calculation, right?
We're, we're in engineering fee calculation.
So, the Board wants that.
Yeah.
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous.
Okay. Engineering fee calculation, that's at five E. Carl submits, uh, this spreadsheet itemizing wages, benefits, operating costs. Your approval is needed to go forward with a public hearing to establish a formula for engineering fees of whatever that compensation was for that particularly, a plus twenty-five percent operating cost. Is there anything that you see that we could have left out of this calculation formula?
Well, I looked, I looked and I saw that they're listed in there, but I think I was surprised on a couple of, a few things that, I don't know. I just thought that they, they would be more, but they, apparently they aren't.
So, you think, some of the items look low?
What about supervision?
That's administration staff support.
No, I took that as your support person, but that's the whole thing?
I said, I asked him who was in there. He says that's if I have to oversee something and it's Kathy's time.
That's the twenty-four percent factor that's on this sheet.
No, I was, that, that would be, no, I understand that, but how? How did the first group of numbers get arrived at? So, obviously, the office base, that's an easy one.
Yeah, one-eighth of the, there are eight offices and one-eighth of the total facility cost.
That, that was the third line down, David, admin staff support. I did not, I, I did not think, I wasn't sure if that included just Kathy or if that was not only Kathy, but also supervised or some, because you have to be supervised and, and. So, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, let's just say that.
That looks light to you.
It's, it looks light because if I'm, if I'm, if you're telling me that, let's just say this is Megan, right? If Carl has X, he only has what, three direct reports technically? Four? Does he?
People reporting to him?
Yes.
Let's see, Megan.
Megan, Mike, Hill House, Mike Walton.
Mike Walton.
And, uh, who else?
Jason.
Now, what about the other Mike? Is he just a sewer? Or does he, does he?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not saying you would, I'm not saying that you would just, you would take Carl's salary and divide it by, I'm not saying that at all. But you've, you've got to assume that he, he spends probably half his time supervising or directing those people's work. And, and I would, I would add another, I would add that time onto that because. Or, or portions of it. It just seems that, that one seemed very, very light.
Yeah, and then not only, um, you know, the staff support, administrative staff support or finance staff support.
Right, that's not there either. Someone's doing the payroll and cutting the, you know, you know, you go into a benefit fair. I'm, I'm just saying all these things go into.
And I guess the one question I had, the hourly rate is based on how many hours? I didn't see that in yet.
It's a salaried position, so.
It's a, it's a forty hour week.
Okay.
Salary position.
Well, what about the nights that she's at the planning board?
She's salaried.
I understand that she's salaried.
That's not, not billable to a customer.
She's at the planning board commenting on plans.
Public duty.
I, I follow what, what the chairman's saying, is even though she's salaried and we're not paying her extra to be at this meeting.
There's still a cost there.
That's part of her duties, and if in total, she's spending fifty percent of her time either during the day or at planning board meetings, doing plans review, and then fifty percent of her salary should be included in here. Or, but we need to take into account the time that she's spending at the planning board meetings.
But my basic question is, you come up with an hourly rate from payroll, okay? In order to come up with an hourly rate, you have to be based on X amount of hours. What is X for the calculation?
Probably two thousand eighty a year.
Forty hours.
Okay. Now, if you're salaried, and you're doing like when we hired Rick, and we had the commissioner in here, commission in here, and I asked the question, if that job requires sixty five hours, oh, well, it's salaried. Okay. Does the person work forty hours? Would they actually work sixty five? She might be salaried, but what's the number based on to come up with that calculation?
Forty hours. It's based.
What if she's working fifty?
It'd be a lower hourly rate.
Doesn't increase the cost of the town.
It's salary and billable, I think, are two different things.
That's where I'm coming from.
And what we're looking for here is not taking her salary and breaking it apart. We're looking at what is, when we do billable, what is the proper amount, correct? And the proper amount is taking those costs and the costs of administration, office, et cetera. In fact, you know, I'm sure all of us have gone down there into that, into the, I'm gonna call it the engineering department. I mean, I don't think you'd see a lot of other people in engineering working in an office such as that.
Let's go back to the percentage.
I mean, I was just saying, I mean, all I'm saying is that it's very discounted. It's not, it's not, you know.
Right.
And so, so does that, yeah, I won't go too far. It, it's very discounted that that, does that make the job she's giving less? That's all.
Yeah.
Question, when staff attends meetings, do they, are they then able to take time off during the week?
Your salary deflects. I'm, I'm.
But I'm saying, is it a wash? In other words, is it still forty hours, basically?
It may be.
But, that, that's, see, that's the difficulty when you're trying to calculate this out, because you, you're using apples to calculate oranges. Okay?
I agree.
I, I see, I, I don't. The, the basic premise is, we have an engineer that's hired to do engineering work and plans review and work with the planning board. What percentage of all the time she works, or whoever is doing it, is working on the billable product?
Absolutely, yeah.
If it's fifty percent of the time, it's fifty percent of her salary. You can't increase her, we only pay X number of dollars.
It's not just her salary, it's all the other costs associated.
I understand. And then it's fifty percent of all of that other stuff that's associated with it.
Right. But fifty, it comes down to the same thing. Fifty percent of forty hours that she works, or is it fifty percent of sixty hours that she works?
It's fifty percent of the X number of dollars we pay every year for that position. Because doesn't, that's what it costs the town.
It's easier way of doing it. And, and then you just, and then you apply that factor.
But we can't make money on it. We can only get reimbursed for.
If you go that route, then you, then you still have to add that percentage factor.
Well, then that, that, that's, that's where we have the problem, because an engineering company.
Can add one third profit.
No, not only for the profit, not only for the profit, okay? But if a person is consistently working more than forty hours a week, that person might get a bonus. That might be included in that. We're trying to come up with a rate that is a reasonable rate to charge for what she does. And the problem that we have, the difficulty, and the planning board has a concern about it, is people come in with a plan. They don't go to the engineering company and pay three hundred dollars an hour, because they'll come in over here, since the town has an engineer, and the engineer will do the engineering, and now I'm gonna pay it out at fifty dollars an hour versus three hundred dollars an hour.
Let me try to simplify it. Let's say tomorrow, we wanted to hire an engineer at a hundred thousand dollars a year, and all they were gonna do, one hundred percent of their time, was plans review, work with the planning board, and it was billable time. Hundred percent. What would we bill?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars. But what if that person worked sixty hours?
Doesn't matter.
What if they worked eighty hours?
Doesn't matter. It's your cost.
It's, it's your cost. We can't, we're not, we as a municipality can't make money. So it doesn't matter how many hours, it's what percentage of her time.
Paying overtime.
Right. What percentage of her time is being put towards these billable hours? What's her salary, his salary, whoever that position is, and that's the percentage. And you're right, it's not gonna be compatible with the private sector. You know, I mean, people, if, if people wanna try to get away and have us do their planning for them or engineering.
Then that's our problem.
They're gaming the system, and they're getting a deal.
I don't think the number will be that far off, though, from what, it's, I don't think it's gonna be substantially off from either way. Taking the entire year's salary, break it to an hourly wage, or versus what you said. I, I don't, I, I think that my bigger issue is this twenty four percent. I think that's low. And that's the, the percentage of the hourly rate that goes towards all these extra things, such as the, you know, the benefits, not the benefits, the, you know, the, the office space, the car, computer, administration. I think, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a higher amount. And, and it's interesting, when we saw the bill last week.
Hundred and sixty nine percent.
At a hundred and sixty nine percent. And then they had ten percent profit on top.
Then ten percent was for the profit after that.
Yeah, Nick?
What, Sue, I don't know if you're familiar or may have this number, annually, what does that billing bring in?
Thirty eight thousand, I thought we arrived at last.
Yeah, most of that thirty eight thousand was.
And I think there was thirty eight, and they were billing it at fifty dollars. Is that my understanding?
Yeah.
I think, don't do, so someone can do the math quickly, I think that adds up to nineteen or twenty weeks.
And I guess.
If we were, if we were.
All right, it was about forty, wasn't it like forty, forty percent of her time?
Yeah.
What I was gonna ask, depending on what that value was, would it be worth the town contracting out that review and simply passing that cost on to the developer?
That's what we used to do. And we changed over to this, to justify getting an engineer, another engineer onboard.
Going with the idea that the process that her salary would be covered by what was being billed out.
Correct.
Correct. That's where we're not.
Or a good portion of it, yep.
And that's, or a good portion, and that's where we're not.
And keep in mind, though, if, if we were not in the economic state that we're in, you'd have much more plans before the, you'd, you'd have more. So I think, I think.
Revenue generation.
If it, if it were normal, I think you probably would be covering her.
Well, we didn't go back subsequent years to see if that ever happened, I don't think, did we?
But if I could.
I mean, we could see how much we build up.
What do we spend on engineering? In other words, would it be more cost effective to, to contract out that planning portion and pass that cost, whatever, if it's a hundred dollars, we, we charge it.
Yes.
And do everything else in house, free up Megan's time completely to do in-house engineering? What's, what's that balance?
Yeah, what do we spend, do we, what do we spend?
We spend a lot more sending out.
And then there isn't any of this trying to figure out the rates. It's whatever it is. If, you know, if CLD charges us two thousand dollars, that's what the developer pays. If, you know, whatever the engineering firm is that reviews the plans.
We got plenty of in-house stuff to engineer, all of our roads, for crying out loud.
But we'd have to have a savings. In other words, we'd have to offset it with savings that, to justify doing that. I think you would have to be able to show savings in an engineering line.
Was the work that was sent, was it, and I don't know this, that's why I'm asking a question, the work that was sent out, is that something that can be performed in-house? Or is that something that, of a different qualification or a different skill set?
It's a combination sometimes, depending on.
I mean, in other words, if we, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know if that's work that had to be sent out versus if it could have been done.
We didn't have an engineer in-house.
Okay, so, but she'd be able to form the, that was, the, the, the projects that were sent out? I'm just saying, she had, I, I don't know if there's different skill sets.
Probably in the vast majority of things, she can do it, we can do it in-house.
If it was a steel structural bridge.
Bridge, that would.
No.
No.
I understand that, but same, but the other, and I don't know what percentage of stuff we sent out.
Things we typically do in-house.
Yeah, or structures.
And landform, you know, road building, land.
That obviously would have to be a conversation with.
Later.
Public Works Director, Planning Board.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion for now, because we need to do something now, is that we accept this for now. I mean, it's more than what we were, it's, and it's, and it's, whether we agree or we don't agree, it's better than what it is now, and it's more reflective of what the true cost is. I'm not gonna split hairs on, on ten bucks, or five or ten bucks an hour, when it's better than what we have now, and I think the bigger thing.
Why don't you just round the number up to an even number?
Seventy? Seventy?
Gotta go to a public hearing, it's still.
Yeah.
Seventy one.
Even. Get rid of the two cents.
Oh, no, no, we're not going forward with fee. We wanna go forward with the formula.
Formula.
So whatever the compensation is annually, we adjust it, and it adds twenty five percent.
So let's go with, we'll go with, we'll go with the salary plus thirty percent.
Okay.
So compensation, not the.
Compensation, right. Comp, compensation plus thirty percent.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, next one.
What is the next item?
Wallace Road.
Roundabout design.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, or the planting design. Is it five F? And that's being done by the Garden Club and Mark Reinison, along with, in consulted, in consultation, consultation, sorry, with. With DPW.
Okay, the tree that's been planted is, I don't see it on this plan.
I do.
That's what I was wondering.
It's called a prairie fire cherry, and the little dot.
Red leaf.
At the three o'clock.
Red leaf. And that little circle around it is the.
The little dot at the three o'clock position, slightly off-centered, with a, a larger circle around it, represents the mature spread of that tree. The, the, the distortion on this dry diagram, if, is that the road going to the right is not there. That, that's the site on Lamson Apartment.
This one here, you mean?
Yes, just connect, connect that line as you're doing.
Steve, you have an objection to the marigolds, don't you?
No, I just have a question.
It was mine.
And mind you, I like the trees in the circles, but someone mentioned trees and circle and grassmare last week.
Grassmare has one there, yeah.
I mean, but they were talking, it was like, it was like, taboo. I, I like the trees personally. Are we good with trees in the circles, is all I'm asking.
Well, and what is the, what is the Public Works say, because as far as the site? And Nick, Nick had his hand up first.
The question that I had is, I know previously the board voted to allow a monument.
That was mine.
Mm-hmm.
To Philip Shardy.
Yeah.
So there should be some kind, I, I don't wanna get into a situation like we did with the thermometer, where we're, you know, plant, doing things in the, in the flower. I'm sorry, Scott, but.
They invited Kent Nolan to a meeting on this, but he didn't show up. I, I guess he had a conflict or something.
But I think there should still be some, some coordination, so we're, you know, we're planning for the memorial.
We pulled, yeah, pulled the thermometer out.
David?
And I think, the last I heard, the flagpole is gonna be of a short height, and therefore the guide wires overhead, the, the flagpole will be lower than the guide wires.
But that might conflict with the tree.
So the flag, the flagpole, the flagpole could go in the center of the island. And in maturity, it would conflict with the tree. So this, this, this design has to go back to the architect saying, where's the flag?
Flagpole, yeah.
It's a process.
Isn't that the best place for a memorial?
We took that vote, right?
That, that ship has, has sailed. Yeah.
I, I always thought the school would be the more appropriate place.
I only, I only know that the Garden Club, being limited in funds, they, that tree that we started to discuss, they spent a hundred and fifty dollars for it. So it needs to be conserved if, if moved.
I like the tree. I was just bringing it up.
Town manager from a government, what were we talking about?
Steve, my concern with the flagpole, and I've been saying this right along, is it has to be lit, and I know that's a residential neighborhood. And I'm not sure how the residents along there will feel.
They light them from the top.
Or from the bottom up.
Yeah, but you can, now you can light them from the top, and it's very low voltage, LED type lighting.
Well, the lighting gotta meet the town ordinance.
Right.
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept this plan.
Well, is that a premature?
Based on consultation with Kent Nolan, or is there an organization that he's?
The FW.
The FW, with the memorial.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be remiss not to thank the Garden Club. I mean, they, I mean, they've done a lot of work in there to make it look pretty.
It does look nice.
It looks really nice.
It does.
And they, they, these are all donated, all the plantings are donated.
Everything.
Would the, who in your staff, someone on your staff has authority to approve signage?
Temporary signs.
Temporary signs.
Yes.
Would that, would there have been a permission for a moving sale sign to be placed on Wallace Road?
No.
There was not.
No. Is that your sign? You're moving?
No, it was, it was removed.
By the constable?
I won't say who did.
Constable Dave?
He's no longer present. That's not unlike what always appeared down there.
I just, we should not be disturbing that land for temporary signs.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a feeling for the rest of the board.
So be said, so be written.
So, so we won't see a thermometer in here?
I would, I would think.
I'll stick that thermometer anywhere I want you to.
The thermometer probably blew its top this, this Saturday.
It's been removed. It was, I told everyone that we'd remove it. Since we hit our goal, it was removed a week after we did it, and I honored that.
Okay, I figured the hundred and four degrees in Manchester is what blew it up.
I, I would hope this board would support not putting temporary signs in the Wallace Mass Road Roundabout.
They're not supposed to be.
Well, it's at the discretion.
In either, in either roundabout, you don't want any temporary signs?
Well, we did, the reason why I said, we, we have, in, like, in the winter or something, you may, there's, there's nothing in there, and if you were to put up a sign, I'm, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate. Lions Club Craft Fair, or something. I mean, you may put.
Voting signs.
Or voting signs. I don't know, I don't, I don't know if you wanna do that, but.
We don't allow, no, political signs are not allowed at public.
Don't, don't forget, don't forget, signs cannot be placed in historic districts unless they're approved of by the HDC.
God, another power grab.
No, that's what's in the ordinance.
Gotta change that next chair.
So the grassmare roundabout is in a historical district?
I don't know if the grassmare roundabout's in the, technically, I don't think.
Do you want that HDC?
Of course.
It's a land grab. The king of Gaston.
Hey, the, the commission approved the Cos Memorial. Didn't have any problem with it. So, uh, what else on your report?
You're done.
You're done? Okay, uh, new business. You're done? Okay, uh, new business, old business, you said you had some old business?
Yes, sir.
Uh-uh, you made copies.
Uh-uh, we're in trouble now.
I can't meet two-fiftieth committee status. Um, three or four sessions ago. Are you feeling okay?
Yeah.
Uh, three or four sessions ago, this board wanted Public Works to update the, uh, answering question on the town website concerning road plans, and I, I wanna let the viewing public know that that has been done. And, uh, I simply wanna read the, the questions which are then answered, so if the people want, are interested, they know what they can learn.
And this is currently on the website?
Yes, I'm just gonna read the questions that are answered on the website.
Can you read the questions on the website?
Why do we have a road plan? How many roads does the town maintain? How are the roads prioritized? What is the road plan budget based on? What causes a road to break down? Why are you paving that perfectly good road when my road is still terrible?
I ask that question every day.
It's a direct quote.
What is the process of road reclamation? I thought this road plan, oh, I thought this was a road plan, why so much work being done on drainage? Is there a list available to see what year my road is scheduled for repaving? Does the state maintain any roads in Gulfstown? How does the state classification of four, five, and six impact maintenance actions? And finally, does the town have any gravel roads? Those questions are answered on the website.
Oh, you're not gonna answer them for us?
No, we don't have time.
I get that question about where is my road on the list, and I always have to refer them to DPW, but now I'll be able to refer them to the website, so that is very helpful.
Okay, whatever. Any other old business? Committee reports.
I do, I, I, nothing to do with the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, at all. Uh, two items, um, they have to do with signs. Um, I think everyone received a letter from a resident on Prospect Street, regarding parking, and I know, I looked back, it was March, um, we, the board approved placing no parking from here to corner. And I was just there this weekend, and those signs are still not there.
They're with the residence-only parking signs?
That's the second. Glen Lake, I know the, the, you know, we've been receiving.
Do you wanna answer the first one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sure, if you, if you, I didn't, I didn't anticipate you having it.
Yes, um, through the email thread today, it appears that the chief needs an ordinance on that, so he's writing an ordinance for it, so you can have a public hearing on the placing of the no parking from the center of that street on Prospect to Mas Road. So he's in the process of writing the ordinance.
I, I guess, how about if, when did we know this? I would think if, in March twentieth, we had the meeting, March twenty-second, someone would've looked into buying the signs and found out we needed an ordinance, and maybe.
The chief apologizes for the delay.
And then the second was, um, Glen Lake Parking. There's currently, there were two or three large signs erected that somewhere in the middle, 'cause I kinda tried reading them. You can see where it says residence only, um, but it's kinda lost in this big sign that lists all the rules.
It's kinda like the Willy Wonka when they first goes into the factory, and you get to the fine print.
Maybe we're ordering them, but can we get some small, almost like no parking signs that are put up along?
Is it on the guardrails?
That is already in action, uh, stenciled onto the wooden guardrail at each of the vehicle spaces will simply be resident parking only with permit. And it will take up maybe eighteen to twenty-four inches of space, so, person gets out of the passenger door, the driver comes around the front of their car, it'll be right there on the guardrail, resident parking only with permit.
As long as there's something large and something visible.
Mm-hmm. And the, uh, DPW is, uh, obtaining the stenciling, uh, and Park Department will apply the paint.
Okay. All right.
We can get an HDC grant to do the stenciling if you'd like.
Yeah, you might be able to.
That's a bit.
Old, hot, Gothic.
Okay, we're all set there. Uh, library report.
Library met, excuse me, um, first, they did prepare their budget, and their budget was, is, they prepared two different budgets, and essentially what it was, one, um, it was regarding salaries, and in one budget they had COLA, and then the other one they had STEP and COLA, but they were not preparing a budget with zero salary increase at this time, and that was the, that was what the trustees had decided on, so you will be seeing it in, in the, in that fa, in that fashion, the two different pieces.
So there's many, two budgets?
Well, they, they had two, two in front of the group, they're gonna go forward with, with, with the budget with, with, uh, with STEP only, and, and they'll leave out the COLA.
STEP only.
Yeah, and they had another one, they had actually prepared with STEP and COLA. Just so that you know that.
They'll proceed with COLA and no STEPS?
Oh.
No, STEP only. Oh, with STEP and no COLA.
So we got Parks and Rec and two-fiftieth.
I did discuss the, the view of the board, and they decided to, the trustees have decided to go with this manner. Also, they did speak a little bit about, um, circulation, that few, they are actually seeing fewer visits to the library, but circulation is up. In fact, they're actually getting, they actually had a hundred new cardholders, and they're actually having people where they implemented the fees, where now people out of town are actually paying the extra fee to be, be a member at the library. They also did a self-evaluation, where essentially where, within, where they did not attach names to, but it was just evaluation of things that they thought that they'd like to see with, in, within the, within the, within the trustees' board, and it was, with that being said, it was very interesting, and some of the, some of the insight and some of the thoughts of what they would look like and how they responded to it, I'm not sure if they're going to make an action plan to it, but they were looking to, what, what they were doing with that self-evaluation, self-evaluation was trying to find a little more direction and common cause, and what they wanted to do within, as a group, and what, where they wanted to go with the library as it goes towards the future. There was a lot of talk also about eBooks, um, and how libraries are changing what that means in the future, and.
Really?
Well, part, part of the process right now is that, you know, especially, there was conversation regarding, everyone knows that board is, is now closed, but you have different readers, and how do you attach to that, how, you know, the fees and the costs, and they were looking at, they're looking at a lot of those things, 'cause essentially what's happening is, I think everyone's looking at as the libraries are gonna be changing and how they're gonna be going into the future, so, uh, that, and also, um, there was some, uh, there was some conve, conversation about Gee Milk, and that's, that's where their, their association with other libraries, and they're hoping that, uh, another possible library will come down. It will affect some of the costs of, of, you know, lower the cost a little bit, but it won't be a lot. And what was interesting in, in their conversations, that it, you know, how, how that was brought in, how they discussed the budget, is that, I think, like, Parks and Rec, the, the library budget, there's just not a lot of things that you can do within it for, for cost savings regarding, you know, um, what's the best way to put it? There's only so much you can save off of pens and, you know, pens and paper and pad, and so, so they're looking at that process of, their costs have gone up with heat, their costs have gone up, you know, they're looking at, well, they haven't gone yet, but they're looking at salaries, they're looking at the amount of hours there, they're looking what it's costing for, um, for publication, so it, it, and they're really trying hard to come in with, with what I call a, a, a very conservative budget, uh, but, like I say, there's not a lot of lines in that budget as we look at it, so, and that was pretty much how we went with the library.
Did they keep their, um, hours the same?
They, yeah, they talked about that, that hours, and, 'cause there was a little confusion beginning of the year regarding the, the, was it the five or the six hours, I believe, and so the new budget will, will be reflected over that five or six hours.
Okay, so they're maintaining the level?
Correct.
Right, they're not going back to.
Correct.
Um, is that anything based on their usage that you mentioned?
Well, once again, it, you know, their usage, uh, like I said, their, their circulation of their uses is up, but I think it's just coming, like, people are coming in at different times, and, yeah, I mean, honestly, they're making do with what they have.
Okay, okay, any other questions, or?
I had one. Could, um, we talked, we had a cooling station here this week, and the, we know these things happen only once in a blue moon, but can there be some dialogue with the trustees, so that the library is a much more suitable place to have a cooling station, in my opinion, because you can sit down, you can read, you can kinda do things, um, if possible, and, and if need be, have them be the cooling station, or a, you know, a place for people to go and those type, I don't know if that was, is that discussed at all, or?
It's funny, I, I, good, good point, it did come up because they were talking, was it Springfield, Massachusetts, was it, or?
It's Worcester.
Was, was it Worcester, where they said the library became essential service?
Mm-hmm.
And there was that talk about how, you know, in other words, they were using the library as an essential service.
Manchester used their library as well as the C U.
And so there was that conversation of how does.
But we don't have any control over that.
Correct, but that's one of the things that the trustees would have to, you know, honestly, you know, speak about, but they had talked about how it was, they were, they were talking about that article where it had become essential services.
It would have to be opened up, extended hours in that situation.
Right, I, I think the point that I'm, that I'm driving at here is that if the trustees were to say that is, that is something that they would be willing to do, in the event that emergency management says we need to establish, uh, one of these areas, it doesn't matter if it was on a Saturday or a Sunday, that, that the library has to then open up, and, and they would, you know, that is one of the things that just has to happen, so, um, if they were to go down that path, I'm not sure if town employees or emergency, I'm sure.
Certain staffs.
Certain, right, cert, other people, but if that's something that this board feels comfortable asking, I just, personally, I just think it's, it's more appropriate, you know, for it to be the library, um, it's more comfortable, there's, there's things to do.
The conversations out there, I mean, the thoughts out there regarding that article, I think the question is, will the dialogue continue, and it was, it was something they spoke about.
Well, the only thing to do at this point is ask us if they wanna consider going a little further with that.
I thought it'd be, but that would require action of the board, I think, you know, to ask, Steve, to ask them. Or a vote from this board to ask them if they would consider doing that in the future.
Does it need a vote? Can you just, as the, the liaison just bring that up at the next trustee meeting?
Yeah.
Part of that, you would, I mean, we could, and part of that, we would, you, once again, you're talking somewhat of a, of a business cont, you know, some type of continuity plan, if, if this was to go into effect, what does it mean? How is it implemented?
Then it would have to go in the emergency management plan, as one of the areas.
That's, well, it's more than just a conversation.
I, I don't see it happening all that often, I, I think you're looking at maybe two to three days a year, and if that.
First time I remember doing one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that initially should be the contact, and have that dis, outlet, let, let Steve have that conversation and see where that goes. Okay? Two-fiftieth?
Parks and Rec, we're done. Covered that.
Unless you wanna do it again.
I wanted to, but I'm not.
Are you sure about that?
Two-fiftieth, this is pretty quick, um, parking lot and town hall, I don't know if we have an ordinance or whatever, but we're having this block party, and we're closing off town hall, so I can't have any overnight parking in the town hall.
I need an ordinance.
On a Saturday night, I need it blocked off.
What do we need to do to do that?
I have no idea who the users are that do park here overnight.
Well, one of them is a town vehicle.
Oh, okay.
So if it's a simple matter of just barricading, you know, that, you know, then that's something that can be done, but I just.
Do we have an ordinance on it? Parking in the town hall?
If we were renov, if we were repaving or doing repair work, could we do, could we block it off?
Okay, so I just.
Still town property.
I just wanna make sure if we have an ordinance, that we're not violating the ordinance, that's all.
Can we shut a street down for a party?
Do we need to?
No, that's my next question.
Well, you gotta start by, where you start is to see, is there an ordinance that, that we're dealing with? If not, then I think we need to just contact the chief.
Okay, so that's part, part of, part of our plan is to have staggered road closures, parking lot closures, et cetera, so the town hall parking lot would be closed the, you know, Saturday, you know.
Let Sue know the, the date, so it's in the minutes.
Twenty-seventh, I guess.
It would be the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah, probably six P M.
Needs to be signed that, um,
Before that, right.
The overnight parking on Friday must be out at seven or eight in the morning.
Right. Yeah. No.
No?
No. It would be, I'm sorry, it, it would be, uh, you're right, it, there'll be no cars allowed to park there beyond six o'clock at night, or eight o'clock, yeah, they have to be removed.
So you would like to not have overnight parking the night before?
Right, you got it.
No overnight parking.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll put, have to put up a sign, subject to towing, or, you know.
Just barricade it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we'll, we'll, police will call somebody there.
Saturday or Friday and Saturday?
Friday will be Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so what are we gonna do with this? We're gonna find out the process that we have to go through, is it a simple board, vote by the board, or do we need more than that? That's what we have to find out.
Do we want barricades at seven o'clock at night, or in, because we know that businesses park over here?
I think we have to do it.
At nine o'clock at night, or eleven?
We can talk about that with the chief, see what he thinks.
Considerable number of customers do park here to go to the businesses across the street.
I understand, it's, it's a one, it's a once every fifty-year event, I think, you know.
Every fifty or two-fifty?
Fifty, I think, you have them every fifty years.
I know, but is it next fifty years we're gonna close the parking lot?
Right, um, the other thing was road closures, um, parts of Church Street are gonna be closed in the morning, probably around eight o'clock in the morning, that road will get closed from Main Street to pretty much Joe Burnham Real Estate, and then people coming in from the bank will, would have to go around on Church Street and come in through, there'll be a little area through Kendall Hadley for, for that morning period.
And the post office.
And the post office, correct. Um, I'm working on a notice to all of the, uh, abutting property, not just property owners, but what I learned last time is I sent a letter out to all of the abutters, but the tenants did not know about it. So I spoke to a few tenants around here, and they didn't know about it, so, um, I'm gonna get with Lee Minnick, I know Lee manages the property right next to town hall here, and we'll make sure that, that, um, we'll send out two notices between now and the event to let people know that they're gonna, especially the one next to town hall, because that's a parking lot there, they won't be able to get in and out, so they're gonna have to park, park elsewhere, and we're gonna try to arrange some parking for them, uh, at New England Sheet Metal. Um, I'm, yeah, uh, and the next.
Northeastern Sheet.
Northeast, northeast, I'm sorry, northeastern.
Northeastern Turn, northeastern.
I apologize, northeastern Sheet Metal, Sheet Metal, they, who's been gracious enough to allow us to, uh, park there. And, um, just to let you know, we did not have to pull power from PSNH poles, um, there was already existing power in that little park, which we'll be able to add additional circuits to, and then, uh.
So the chief doesn't have to have to temper the generator and stuff?
We, we probably gonna still have to do a couple of generate, we're gonna definitely have to do generators, there's no doubt about it, but that was much better than trying to, it was five hundred dollars plus to do each, each power drop. Um, and Northeastern Sheet Metal has also been gracious enough to allow us to tap into their power from their, one of their auxiliary buildings, right where the stage is. So we're gonna use, uh, use their power, and Sue's gonna get them a certificate of insurance and stuff, so, that's very nice of them, they're allowing us to use that, that facility for, uh, volunteer parking, and, and the entertainers who are, who need to have park, dedicated parking, designated parking spaces, so. Other than that, the plans are fully underway, we do need volunteers, so if any, anyone would like to volunteer, um, please contact myself or Jennifer Thoreau, and just, or call town hall, we'll, we'll make sure that, um, we get you to the right spot, and I'll, I'll give you Jennifer's phone number and email, Catherine.
I have her email.
You already have it, so, uh, we do need, we need about, we need over a hundred volunteers, I think we have like seventy or eighty now, that's starting to come in pretty good, but we need people to do like two-hour shifts, just doing different things, so I know that the National Honor Society, a lot of the students are volunteering, a lot of the community groups, but anybody, if you're out there, you wanna that, you know, donate a couple hours of your time, you get a volunteer T-shirt, which is a two-fiftieth T-shirt if you do it, so.
You got a question?
Just a question, radios for that day?
Yeah, we have radios from CERT, and I think they're something that we can get more, I mean, I think that we can get up to like eight to ten of those radios, so, do you know of a better source, or?
No, I just, uh, I mean, I, I could assist you in that, but I just, that's usually something that comes up that you need to.
Yeah, communication, and, and, uh, I know that a, a local business donated two of those club-type wagons to make deliveries with, and we're seeing if possibly Stonebridge might lend us a couple of golf carts to go around, and, um, that's it, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape, we, uh, just as a recap, we have fifteen food vendors, a lot of them are local, but one of them, Famous Daves in Manchester, uh, they do, uh, barbecue, they're, they're coming. Um, we have over, between the, the Village Trestle and the, and the music, that we have, uh, booked twenty-eight bands. Um, I believe we have eight or nine kids attractions that are slides, bouncy house, um, you name it, we got.
They gotta be staked into the ground very well.
They're all staked in, yeah. Yeah.
And, and can we?
Dunk booth, um, we've, and we, and all of our.
No trampolines, right?
No trampolines.
Okay.
And, uh, the vendors have been submitting their certificates of insurance, and. And the vendors have been submitting their certificates of insurance and.
Could I have copies of those or get copies of those in my file?
Yeah, you're going to get, I got, I had Catherine make some copies and then we're following up with everybody. As well.
Insurance release go to the Lions Field?
I believe all the certificates of insurance except for this latest one.
Yeah, Northeastern Sheet Metal.
They had to wait till July first because that's our renewal date. Renewal date, yep.
Is there any other questions?
And what's the date for this?
August twenty seventh. The other big question.
This year.
Good luck.
Yeah, August twenty seventh.
He likes that question.
The big question for the Board of Selectmen is the event in October, and that is, are we going to have a float?
Ice cream float?
No, a float and a parade.
Oh, oh.
And I will say this, I, I should bring it up because the, the committee had a very long discussion about this parade. As we, we have a Memorial Day Parade, that's a pretty solemn parade. There was discussion about, because we're entering into a political year, you know, presidential thing, you know, were they going to allow anybody, you know, just anybody to do that? And, and the, you know, the folks that were at the meeting last week did not want this to be a, you know, vote for political thing. So again, since this committee is a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen, I wanted to let you know that. Because if, if there is somebody who was a state senator, state rep, senator, whatever, and they want to go and say, you know, make a float and say, hey, vote for me. The, the committee is not going to, they, they can march in.
I would have thought the theme would have been to do with two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
It is, it's going to be, Goff's, the theme is Goffstown, I think it's like past, present and future.
Oh, so they could come out to the future.
You know, so that's the theme, so we just didn't want it to be, you know. Like a free for all, shall we say, so, I mean, people are certainly politicians are going to be, if you're, if you're a, you're invited to, to march and everything, but not with campaign signs and not.
The only thing that I would, I guess my thought on that would be, what can we allow or not allow? And I don't know, I mean, if that's, if that is a, if that is a parade and to be in that parade. How, how does one get into the parade? Do they have to get permission? Do they have to fill something out?
Yeah, they have to fill out an application.
Okay, they fill out an application.
There are parade rules.
Okay, so I guess the question that we would seem to me was, can we have any regulation on what their float or whatever, the the content.
That's why I brought it up.
On it, I don't know if we can regu, if, if we, what we can and can't allow.
That's why I brought it up.
And I think that that's, that's a question that we would need to.
For right now, there's a application form to participate in the parade. So if somebody shows up on the morning of the event with fifty supporters of some campaign, we would say no, because they haven't submitted an application.
These, I bring this up because although however innocent parades may be, they also happen to be some of the most controversial things. Because people want to march in them and they're not in the spirit of what the intended, they want to make statements, right? They want to prove a, a First Amendment right or, or those types of things. And we're, we're just trying to make it as a two fiftieth, you know, community, you know, that, not making anything, not being political. But we recognize that there may be some out there that maybe do want to go down that route. But I, I guess, I, I brought it for that very reason, Phil, to the board. Because if the board has feelings one way or another, I got to communicate that back.
Anybody else have a comment they want to make?
Want to get a legal opinion, Mel, would you say?
I think that might be a good idea. In other words, if, explain that they're going to be filling out. Is it an application or a permit or what are we calling it?
There's two different routes to go here, Sue. Technically, we're doing this during the pumpkin regatta. So if it is a two hundred and fiftieth committee, which is a committee of this board, there's one set of rules, in my opinion, which I think might be more liberal. That's just my opinion. However, if it's a Goffstown Main Street Parade, a private nonprofit, they have, they can create their own rules and say, we are allowing this and this. And we, we gave them a permit and here's a, my, my point is this, if we were to rent out the Parks and Recreation Building, we ran into this before to the Republican Club. And other people wanted to go, the Republican Club has every right to say, this is for the only members of the Republican Club, no one else is invited. Same thing, if it's a private entity that's having a parade, you can't dictate who they invite and who they don't invite. Because it's a private entity that's, that is doing it. That's just, and again, I think that's where we have to find out, is there a difference between it being a private entity running it or is it a public?
That's what Sue will research, whether it's advisable which route to go.
But I, I would, and again, Sue would have to find this out, but I would think if, if the parade has parameters, it's a two hundred and fiftieth parade. These are the, you know, if you want to float, it has to be.
These dimensions, this.
Dimensions and related to a two hundred and fiftieth theme. You know, and if X Y Z organization wants to, you know, somebody for president wants to.
Do the float.
Create a float along those theme.
Nobody.
And we could say, no political advertising, no.
That was it.
Commercial advertising, it's purely a.
That was exactly what we talked about.
And as long as it's consistently applied to everyone who is potentially bringing a float in, I, I don't think.
That is exactly what we talked about, is that anyone can be in it as long as it is about Goffstown's two hundred and fiftieth. That it's not promoting a political cause or a, you know, trying to sell cars or something like that, you know.
You have a question, Steve?
I was just wondering, how many floats were you expecting? I mean, just, I mean, I have no idea, I'm just trying.
Two hundred and fifty, one for you.
Two hundred and fifty floats.
No, I mean, I, I don't know if I've ever seen a float parade in Goffstown.
Well, that's what we're trying to do it, we have a lot of interest in it.
Okay, it'll start from?
High school.
And?
Uh, we're thinking about just having it go the same route as Memorial Day Parade, it's easiest, that's what we talked about. Yeah, simply because it's, it's easy for staging, et cetera. Oh.
One more thing for the two fiftieth?
Yeah. Cemetery field, we wanted to make sure that, it doesn't appear to be any work going on there. So if we can park cars there, allow cars to be parked there, then we will do that, because there's going to be a desperate need to park.
It might be a big puddle over there.
Of the new, the old?
No, 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 not, no, on the old one.
Expansion site.
Because if that is the case, then we'd have to, you know, kind of, you know, rope it off so people know, you know, what kind of.
We need some volunteers there to direct cars where to park. Like we did at Roy Field.
Yeah.
Can we go on to C I P?
That's it.
C I P met last week, Selectmen Pierce was kind enough to attend for me. I did not have a chance to read through this, so Selectmen, if you wanted to recap, if there was anything of interest.
The C I P committee finished their deliberations. In the course of the summer, they, they changed priorities on some of the projects that were before them. They moved some out to a, a future year. And would you want me to read the bottom line figures?
I think the only correction on that, the fire station, the one point six would be a bond. So that would be an offsetting revenue.
There would be vehicles on the C I P adding up to one point two million. And capital projects adding up to seven point two million dollars. And altogether, that's eight point, nearly eight point five million dollars. With about one million dollars of offsetting revenue plus the bond for another million point, million and a half.
Yeah, I believe the payments for that wouldn't start until.
Yeah, right. So. The immediate, the immediate impact is seven point four minus.
Yeah, about five point.
So, yeah, five.
Five point eight.
Five point eight.
Last year we spent three point, what?
About three million, right?
I thought it was less than.
This is town and school or just town?
Just town.
No, schools.
Just town. And if I could add, not this past week, but the, the C I P committee did discuss looking at this process purely as a planning tool. They didn't want to get into, you know, it's five million this year and last year it was only, they tried to prioritize the needs, identify things that, on their merit. And they basically said they're going to leave it to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee to decide financially, out of these things, you know, what it is that the town can afford to, to do.
There were closing comments by a member of the committee that the Budget Committee and, and this board would attempt to hold to the spirit of the C I P. These are capital improvements that are necessary and they're planned to make an average expense over the year in and the year out. And if we choose to delay some of these capital expenses, they balloon up in a future year. Just a reminder, as we, as we deliberate these projects later on this fall.
You got a comment there on the C I P?
Yeah, I just got a phone call, no, no, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, lots been put off too.
Nick, we got a copy? I guess I echo C I P committee's sentiments in that a lot of things have been deferred. And we're getting to a point where we need to, to start looking at these, these items. But the question that's going to come before us, and I think it's, it's kind of one that we always do backwards, is we need to look at what is the, what's the pie size? You know, are we willing to raise taxes twenty percent to be able to handle the C I P needs, the budget needs? And then once we get, kind of get a handle on that, then we need to start backing all these other things into it. Versus just going through the whole budget cycle and at the end saying, okay, you know, we're five million dollars more than we were last year and now what do we do?
You know, here's the hard part is that there, there are some of these things where, you know, to me, like financing, bonding make just a tremendous sense. Because the problem with that is that it takes a sixty percent majority vote and that's very difficult to get. But, you know, when you, when you're talking about, like a few years ago, we tried to bond, you know, three vehicles. And that did not pass, I mean, to me, that was kind of short sighted because the cost of this equipment is going up more than what the bond, you know, more than the interest rate that we're paying. And we have historically low bond and interest rates right now. So in a time in which you're, you're pressed, you just don't go out and, you know, take money and just buy a brand new car cash. You, you, you know, so, you know, I think you try to stay within the spirit of not being, you know, having too much debt. But this town has like a really, really low debt limit, a debt load. I mean, and I think we need to, the hard part is how do you convince the voters that, yep, we're running up against the wall, we've deferred, deferred, deferred. You know, you know, how do we program this stuff in, but we have, we're at a point where bonding of these bigger items, you don't bond a, a police cruiser. But you do bond a four hundred thousand dollar trash truck, you know, and others if you couple them together, so I, I think.
And, and it's a different philosophical view, some, some towns do a lot of bonding because their view is, okay, this thing's going to last ten to twenty years. While the people who are going to use it or get use out of it for the next ten, ten to twenty years should be paying for it.
But we haven't, and that's.
But we haven't.
So you have to now.
The taxpayers today are paying for that.
Because there's two ways, and there's two ways of looking at that, because on the same token, I'm going to pay taxes, I'm le, I'm moving in three years. So I'll pay the taxes now for the service that I'm getting.
Right.
I think we ran into this last year, well, we run into it every year, I think we need to, to meet with school also. Because, I mean, obviously during the old boards meeting, they were talking about bonding for sixteen point two million. I mean, this, it, I think we need to get, I mean, obviously, they're separate from us, but when that tax bill comes in to, to, to anyone in town, it's a single tax bill, we need to talk, I mean, I, I think it'd be wise for us not to work totally separate from the school and vice versa regarding what, you know, where they're at a little bit too on this.
Yeah, can we get, there's, we're going to get a final copy of the C I P, I guess?
The next step is the Planning Board, go to the Planning Board and then once they accept it, it'll come to.
It'll come to us from the Planning Board. I simply put the two bottom line figures out there from the town's side of the C I P, but part of that whole document is the school's side. They're attempting to have a significant bond to do renovations in several buildings. Plus, I believe we all those, already discussed this evening, a football field.
I think that's bonded as well.
It's part of the bond. And, and at that point, you know, they would be not utilizing Barnard Park? Has that been discussed?
I think the, they'll continue to use Barnard because they, we just signed an agreement with them on that, they'll continue to use it for some practice. But all their track meets would be held on their new track facility and they'd have the turf field, which would take pressure off of.
Right, so they can use the spikes.
But all I'm trying to say is, I'd hate to see us go into a year where we're looking at the, you know, these budgets are tough. And next thing you know, we're looking at seven million dollars there, the school side's looking at sixteen point two plus whatever, you know, whatever else might be in the C I P.
This would be a bond.
And this, yeah, I know, but this all goes in front of the voters in one shot, it doesn't, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's a very wise move for both town or the school side.
And the fear is, there is also legislation now for tax caps. You know, so you could very well see something like that on a, you know, a petition war article. And then, you know, then we're kind of boxed in now because we have millions of dollars worth of items that have been deferred. And if you're limited, if you're restricted, how do you ever get those?
I think, I think from now, I mean, you can never start too early in terms of letting the community know that, you know, yes, our, our two garbage trucks are, and our recycling trucks. They are in dire need of replacement, they're breaking down left and right.
But you know, but you know what's tough, honestly, you know, I've thought about this for a while, you know what's tough? You tell people how bad the trucks are, but yet.
Still picking up.
Every time I put the trash out, you guys take it away, so. You know, how, how do you convince me that you need a new truck? That's the only thought.
What's the way to convince you, make, don't, don't pick up your garbage every, a lot? Is it braced down?
I don't know, but the point I'm making is, and you know, ironically, that's the issue in the trash business. Because the, the old saying in the trash business is, everybody wants us to pick it up and take it away. But they don't want to know where it's going or they don't want it near them, they just put it out and they want us to take it away. And, and I think that, that's what's tough, I mean, that's, that's what we're up against. And I know the condition of the truck, I mean, Steve knows the condition of the truck. But we have good mechanics that can, you know, put them together with bubble gum and, and paper clips, you know, and make them keep going.
The, on that particular point, the, for the Packer truck, the C I P item is, is to replace the oldest vehicle. Not the Otis, not this two operational day in and day out, and then the oldest is reserved. And I believe on that article last year, we, we said it's going to be replacing one of the two operational vehicles, which is wrong. We were going to take the.
Oldest.
The oldest, which is the reserve in case one of the two primary needs maintenance or it's down for a day. That's the one that is technically being replaced, and so the C I P reads that way this time.
Right, but I believe the, they're going to, they'll replace and eliminate the oldest.
Eliminate, they're eliminating.
The newest one goes on the line.
We have three in the fleet and they're eliminating the Otis in the fleet.
Then they'll just move down one, the old, next oldest.
Whereas, I believe the article last year read that they weren't, the article.
The article, the explanation in the voter's guide.
Explanation.
The, the explanation.
Yes.
In the voter's guide simply indicated that the next to Otis was being replaced. So it looked rather new.
So I, I think Nick's suggestion warrants some discussion in the sense that I think we know what we have to face here. And I, I honestly don't think that we can do it with a status quo budget, I don't. But like what, what are we willing, what do we think is palatable, and then how can we, and what in there can we back into that? And we all know that, it's just the example you used, we're not going to raise taxes twenty percent, that's just not going to happen. But, but what is a palatable number where we can accomplish and try to get, and just start chipping? where we can accomplish and try to get, and just start, start chipping away at this list, which is getting bigger and bigger and bigger? And I think that's maybe the route, you know, the route to go. Because that's by the same token, our oil prices aren't going down, our price of asphalt is not going down, propane's not going down, health insurance is not going down, I mean, you know, unless, and, and again, I'm not hearing from constituents saying, you know, you know what, garbage pickup is, is just too expensive now, I don't need it, I'll take my stuff to the, to the, I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing from, from the constituents, you know what, when it snows, don't start plowing until we get like at least three to four inches, I don't hear that either. So it's like, I, I think people still want the services, but you know, they have to recognize that if we're gonna still continue to perform those services, we're gonna have to have some sort of a modest tax increase to start to pay for, for some of this, especially some of this capital equipment, which actually does the work.
Well, let, let me ask you this question, uh, what do you think about getting the Budget Committee involved and going down and taking a look at those pieces of equipment that we have to replace?
I think, I think the Budget Committee has to be heavily involved in all of these things, whether it be the accounting software, you know, again, not to put you on the spot, but we talked about a lease purchase or something where we can.
Cause we've put that off for how many years now?
And, and that's, yeah, so there's a lot of these things that, you know, uh, and there's nothing really on here that says, oh my god, it's, it's, you know, we can definitely defer it, I mean, even things like, you say, G I S flyover, our maps are so old.
We saw that tonight.
You know?
Yeah.
They're so old. Um, so as you, as you go down, you got, you have to start to, you know, how can we be a little creative?
I, I made the comment on the G I S that it is, uh, part of the assessing, is one of the tools used by the assessing staff.
Code enforcement, it's a lot of different things, you know?
The chair said that was the first time that association was made to the C I P committee, that it's a tool within the assessing department. Up to now, it was like, well, part of this a G I S package, which gives the impression, well, maybe it's not totally useful as a revenue producer, and it is. Our, our official imagery is now ten years old, eleven years old.
I believe our assessor came in on that C I P item, right?
We, we show, we do not show roads and houses that have been built, 'cause it's not part of our official imagery.
Presentation.
Right, as well as Parks and Rec, I, I'm sorry, the, uh, Public Works.
Public Works, right.
And I think, uh, you could go through all of these items and make a, a very strong argument about how they've been deferred and how they're needed. And you then ask yourself, okay, what's the impact, just of that alone, on, on the tax rate, adding two million dollars? Just that, just not even looking at the increases in the fuel and all those other things that, that are going up. So there's gonna be some hard decisions that have to be made.
Every hundred thousand dollars rate is seven cents on the tax rate.
So a million dollars is seventy cents?
Seventy cents, more or less, give, give or take a few cents.
So if two million dollars would be a dollar forty?
That's a rule of thumb used by the Chair of the Budget Committee.
Yeah. Any other questions of Nick on C I P, or David?
Did they have any advice?
No.
I know, just.
Oh, I know, I know. Okay, um, do we have any other public business? Do we have any non-public business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You want to pay them?
Hi.
Hi, good night, Andrew.